Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, and it's 1:04 PM. And this is school board briefing. First, we have our different advisory committee reports. And so I think I'm going to, I think I'm going to go opposite way today on it and start with finance advisory committee. I don't have on my list the presenters, so if when you step up to the microphone to present, if you would start by saying your name, we would appreciate it. Also, we have 30 minutes allotted to these, this particular presentation, the different, the six different advisory committees. So I would ask each presenter to please stay within five, five minutes. Okay, thank you. And sir, go ahead and introduce yourself and begin.
Hang on, we'll get, we'll get it fixed.
My name is Darrell Templum. I'm the chairman of the FAC. This is my third year again being anonymously put as the chairman. We originally started out this year trying to figure out what things we're going to tackle. It appears we're going to be looking at that again, as well as several other things, including benefits and grants, as we have in previous years. And at the last meeting, we've discussed the budget and some of the shortfalls and some of the positives with it. And so far at this point, that's about all. Does anybody have any questions?
That's what I was going to ask. Is there anybody with comments or questions for, yes?
Well, as, as the liaison to the committee, thank you, Darrell, for your hard work and everyone that's on the committee. And I just wanted to say the, the meeting, the last meeting we had, we went through the budget and what it means and asking questions. And I'm just very excited about the depth of understanding that the committee either has or is looking to have, so that when we do have questions or things that we need them to look at, they will be, they will understand them. And I just thank everyone for supporting the committee.
Anybody else have a comment or a question? Okay, thank you. And we do show appreciate our advisory committees. So next up is EDAC Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee.
I'm Dr. Christopher Blakely. I have the pleasure of serving as the chair of the Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee for the school district of Lee County. Today, I offer the 2021-22 quarterly report for September through October. In September, the committee received a parliamentary procedures presentation from our school board attorney and general counsel. The committee elected myself, Dr. Blakely, as chair and Dennis Quisenberry as vice chair. Additionally, the committee selected three representatives and one alternative for the district's site selection committee. In October, the committee received a small business enterprise policy presentation from Dr. Amy Desmore, Chief Financial Officer, Susan Mayle, Executive Director of Business Services, and Laura Neen, Coordinator of Procurement Services. Additionally, the committee took the following actions: approved a motion to recommend the board to consider Dr. Kenneth Savage as a candidate for the permanent superintendent search; approved a motion to condemn the statements from board member Patrica for statements towards Guatemalan students, and recommends that the board take every possible action to hold the board member accountable, not to be limited to a vote of no confidence in an official investigation. Additionally, the committee approved a motion to recommend the board, that board member Patrica consider resignation from the board. For the upcoming presentations for November, the balance of the agenda, the committee will receive additional information about the school board's direction for board member residence area redistricting. And this is the information for information purposes for EDAC.
Thank you, Dr. Blakely. And board members, comments, questions? Yes, Ms. Gittens, and then?
Do you have someone on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Fisher, you're on, on the phone?
Yes, ma'am. I have you.
Okay, that's, I apologize for not recognizing you right from the start. Somebody said she's going to be calling in, and it just skipped out of my mind. So do you have any comments or questions on, on this?
No.
Okay.
Not at this time.
All right. And Ms. Gittens, you had?
I just thank you all for all that you do. And on your future presentation about redistricting, when is your next meeting?
Our next meeting is scheduled for next Monday, November the 8th.
Oh, okay. Because I was looking at the timeframe. We're having a, in our workshop tomorrow, our first briefing, so that would give you more information to discuss as well. So I just wanted to make sure of that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, Ms. Fisher, are you muted?
I'll try.
Okay, because we're getting some background noise here. Yeah, and I am the board liaison for EDAC. This is my second year as the board liaison. And I just love this committee, because this is, this is, this is not a committee where we're going to say, well, who has a comment? Or they are very vocal and very attuned to what is going on in the community, and I really appreciate that, even when we have a meeting that goes for two hours and 15 minutes. We, we appreciate, we appreciate that. So we, the information, when we have board, just FYI, everybody, when we have board workshops that shed a light on important things that we will be discussing at EDAC, like the, the redistricting, they have already gotten a heads up on that. And so I think everybody will just be ready to go. And we have the full group of, of people as presenters. And so I anticipate another interesting and informative meeting. Okay, anybody? All right. Thank you, Dr. Blakely. Appreciate that. Next up is DAC, the District Advisory Council.
My name is Dr. Jeff Spiro. I am the staff liaison for DAC. Our, our chairperson is Scott Hertz, and our co-chair is Kenneth Wolpert. Neither one of them could be here today. Our, our board liaison for DAC is Ms. Patrica. And we've had two meetings. We had one in September and another one in October. Our September meeting consisted of our attorney, Dupay Bruno, going over all the sunshine law and Robert's Rules of Order, as well as a presentation from our accountability, research, and assessment team on the student achievement data, and receiving some input from our breakout groups and suggestions related to successful classrooms and successful teaching. October was last week, and we had a presentation by Dr. Harlan and her team around redistricting. And they, each of those groups were able to hear a whole group presentation. And then we did breakout groups where they received specific input from elementary, middle, and high school to take back and to bring to back to the board as well. So that was September and October.
Okay. Comments or questions, Mrs. Patrica?
Thank you, Dr. Spiro. I also want to thank board member Morgan for filling in for me in October, very short notice. I think I contacted her at like noon on the day of the meeting, and she graciously canceled her plans and filled in for me. I hope that she got the same sense that I get when I'm at DAC. It's really a very energizing experience to be in there with the parents and some staff members who provide real-time feedback to staff to really make sort of the customer service end of the experience of education better. And I've seen staff pivot quickly in response to certain concerns by that group. So I'm very grateful. I'd also like to encourage my colleagues before our conversation tomorrow regarding redistricting to watch that tape, the district advisory council tape, so that you can hear what the feedback was from that segment of the community. Thank you for supporting that, that council so well.
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
And I just wanted to say, it's been a while since I've been to DAC, and I really did enjoy it. It's, it's, Scott Hertz has this thing running like a top. He does a great job. I will say that the, the discussion about redistricting was difficult, because people really had trouble understanding where lines were drawn with respect to neighborhoods. There was a lot of conversation about the Cape being split and where the Cape is being split, conversations about Fort Myers. So it was a very engaging evening, but I think people wished that they had had access to the interactive maps, which they got towards the end of the meeting. So thank you for the opportunity. I appreciated it.
Anybody else? Okay, and thank you, Dr. Spiro. All right. Next is Curriculum Advisory Committee.
Okay, first and foremost, thank you guys for having me here. My name is Melvin Whitlock. I am fortunate to be the curriculum advisory committee chair. And we had our first meeting on September 27th of this year. The board attorney reviewed the parliamentary procedures with us and explained the board policies. We elected myself as the chair for the committee and Mr. Brian DeGrazio as the vice chair. We reviewed the process of the upcoming map textbook adoption and invited members to join one of the committees. Dr. Spiro shared a website information to highlight where the community can see how our district complies with the parent bill of rights. And Ms. Giovinelli welcomed the committee members and shared a discussion on possible next topics. So we did end up having another meeting on October 25th. So just to kind of give a brief on that, we were given a detailed presentation on textbook adoption. We were given an update on the rejection process. We reviewed, as an example, the book that Ms. Giovinelli asked us to review, just as an example of how the rejection process works. We will revisit the process in the future for simplification on the textbook rejection policy. And we are going to update our mission statement. So we're currently in the process of that for our next meeting, which is scheduled on November the 29th. And we are focusing on district collaboration for materials regarding social and environmental support. So that is all I have for you guys. Do you have any questions?
Okay. All right. Ms. Jordan?
First of all, thank, thank all of you who come and speak. I was just curious, you said that you were given kind of like an assignment of a book to, to review?
No. So Ms. Giovinelli asked us to review a book that a parent had expressed some concerns over. So while we didn't formally do the textbook rejection policy, we just looked at certain passages from that book as an example of how we would go about the process.
And would you mind sharing what that book was?
That book was called Joey Pizga Swallowed a Key.
So I'm, I'm sorry. What was that?
Joey Pizga Swallowed a Key.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Giovinelli, do you have anything that you wanted to say?
So is, is my mic on? I don't sound like it is. Is it sounding like it's on? Okay, thank you. Mr. Whitlock actually is a rising star at one of our schools, and I would like to just kind of give him a little shout out for that, because I'm very proud to say he's one of our teachers at South Fort Myers High School, and he's got a great vision. And so I'm very excited for him to be the chairman of this committee. Yes, actually, the book was given to me by a parent out of concern, and I would love to share that with the rest of the board, and I'm more than willing to. But I, I wanted it to be, to go through the process, and it was a great little example for us to see how the process and what a parent or anyone would like to do if they have a, if they have an issue with something that's in one of our books, that's in our libraries and everything. And there's the actual full process. I learned so much just from the one meeting. But there's an actual process, there's a form to fill out, it's on our website, and we went through that and how you would kind of register it, and then where, then the process of where it goes back to the district, and it goes through their processes, and they have a committee. So it was very interesting. And the book was, has, was questionable by some of the, by the, by the members. And so I actually have not done anything at that point. I just let them handle that and was going to try to bring that back up for discussion, but I would love to share that with the board. So be more than willing to do that.
Thank you. Yeah, and I, I think it's great that we have that process document and the form online. It's with the parent, the parent bill of rights with all of that information. It's one of the points to click on. And I know we've mentioned it, I remember mentioning it when I was talking about book censorship last couple of weeks ago. And, and so just, just know, those of you who have concerns about any of the books, and this is for library books or for textbooks, but keep in mind that there is a long, very formal process involving teachers and administrators with the textbooks. Correct, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, yeah. So I was on that committee last year. Anything else? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we are at CSI, which is the Continuous Systemic Improvement Advisory Council.
Good afternoon, board members, and Dr. Savage and board attorney. Nice to see you all. I'm Cindy McClung. I'm the staff representative, the liaison for the CSI committee. Our chairperson, Brian Raznick, sends his regrets that he is unable to be here this afternoon. We have had one meeting at the time of this report, and that was held on September 15th. We had a mixture of people in person and on Zoom at the meeting, and we did hold elections that night and had Brian Raznick elected as chair, and Bill Ribble was elected as our vice chair. It was basically an organizational meeting where the board attorney presented some information around expectations and Robert's Rules of Order. And then Ms. Fisher, who is our board liaison, gave an overview of things that have been going on with the board and answered questions from our committee members. They specifically wanted to know what kind of feedback the board would like from the committee this year. And she targeted three main areas, but also left it open. But the three main areas that she mentioned were that they would like to hear more feedback around parent-community involvement, career and technical education, and then business partnerships. So our next meeting was actually held the very next day after these reports were turned in, and we did hear from our tech and representatives from our tech colleges and also from Rita Davis around the technology and career ed initiatives within our schools. So you'll hear more about that at our next report. And then our next meeting will be next week. At our last meeting, the committee said that they had some concerns, wanted to know more about our mental health approaches with our students, so, and our, our health initiatives overall. So our next meeting next week, we will have a team presenting on those. So we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. McClung. Ms. Fisher, did you have, since you're the liaison, anything to add?
I just want to thank the committee for all of their truth, their poignant questions, and their suggestions. It's a very active committee, and I'm pleased to be the liaison. Thank you.
Any of the board members have anything else to add or a question? Okay, thank you, Ms. McClung. Appreciate that. And construction advisory committee. And you see, I did that special. Put your hand.
Thank you for the switch up. I like not going first all the time.
I'll count on it. All the time.
Good afternoon. My name is Ryan Richards. Retained this year as the chair for the construction advisory committee. We have, we've had two meetings. Our first September meeting, Mr. Dupay Bruno was unable to, to attend, so we did the, the legal briefing, the sunshine law update from our staff liaison. We got a thorough update from Ms. Morgan on a number of issues, including the, the permanent superintendent search, and you know, how the COVID rules as they stand now, things of that nature. We had quite a bit of turnover in membership this year, so it was good to get to know some new and different faces and some different opinions. So we really kind of set out to really establish the agendas for the upcoming meetings and kind of started compiling a list, and then we kind of refined that at our, at our next meeting, which was in October. It was primarily focused around the Small Business Enterprise program, which I believe gave presentation to other committees as well, that's currently under development, to go through the, the current construction projects that are either in design, in construction, or wrapping up or opening from our, from our staff liaison. And then as far as topics for the upcoming year comes, first, our next meeting is tomorrow, and we're going to be looking at the cost effectiveness of some possible renewable energy sources, things of that nature, to try to help keep some of the, some of the utility bills down. But importantly, we were, you know, we're kind of all watching the construction costs go crazy right now, trying to really wrap our head around it about what to do about it in the future. Does it still make sense to build the way we've been building? Does bar joy still make sense now that they're three times as expensive and take a year to get? You know, there's some decisions there that we just want to, don't want to keep making the same mistakes over and over again. So we're going to take a hard look at, you know, construction types going forward. Is it really the right way to do things anymore, considering all that's changed? And with that, some of our other topics are going to be things along the lines of how to attract younger talent to the area. You know, it's, in our industry, it's, it's, everyone has to be kind of imported. There isn't universities here that provide the degrees that we need to do that. So getting kids out of college is, is, is a challenge, and getting the students that we have here to go to college and then come back is also a challenge. So you know, is there anything we can do to kind of, you know, do, make it a little bit more homegrown in a way to, to help that? Because businesses are struggling to find labor right now. So with that, we're really open to any ideas and suggestions from the committee, that things you'd like us to look into this year. But that's kind of what we've outlined to date. And our meeting tomorrow is going to, like I said, be focused on the renewable energy aspect, and then we'll kind of move on from there.
Okay. Did you have something, since you're the?
Yeah, I would like to say I'm very excited about this committee, because there's
Yeah, I would like to say I'm very excited about this committee because there seems to be a lot of forward, is that not coming through? Forward-thinking, questions coming forward about sustainability, green building, are the models that we are currently using for classrooms and schools, what we should be thinking about 10 and 15 years from now? And then also that whole CTE, and how does the committee get involved in exploring, how we create more opportunities for kids? So it's been an exciting start, and I'm really looking forward to working with the group again this year. Thanks. Thank you, Ryan.
Other comments? Would you, go ahead.
I just have a quick one. I noticed on here you talked about the RFQ process, and I don't know if, have we been updated on that recently?
Yeah, I told you in, gosh, what we're talking about is the, oh, and please help me, Ryan.
Yeah, there's some minor adjustments to the documentation.
The continuing services. The continuing services contract. I did bring that back from the committee a couple of months ago when we had that conversation. Currently, it's done on a point basis, and there was, they were raising the question of having it done on a rotating basis because of the cost of all of the materials that had to be created in order to get in the queue, this kind of thing. Have I got that right?
There was two or three minor changes. That's probably the most significant one, and we did kind of make a recommendation to move forward with some, you know, revisions in the next time, which will be a couple of years before it actually comes into effect. And we had kind of passed them on to the legal department to make sure there wasn't any issues there before we formally present them to the board as a recommendation, is kind of how we left that. So we'll be following up on that this year. But yeah, on the, like she said, Ms. Morgan hinted on the continuing services contracts that we're recommending that you don't require the physical presentations. You know, for things like construction managers, you know, you might take 10, 12 firms, and you have eight jobs that summer, and, you know, people put a lot of effort into these, get on the list, get, and then just don't get any work out of it. So we're hoping that the actual book submittal would be sufficient to go ahead and make that list, make that ranking, and give out the work that way, just so it's not an extra expended effort that doesn't end up being fruitful.
Well, and I guess my question with that would be, would that put more on staff? And honestly, I'm out of my purview with this, and that's why I'm asking, but receiving the book proposals rather than presentations, is that going to mean more staff time to go through those?
If anything, it's less. We already, you already do the book proposals and presentations. We're just saying, take the rankings, you already generated off the book proposals.
Just use those.
Yeah, and just use those. That ends up becoming the order of the presentations, but then you could essentially cut off that whole second step and not have to go through the re-scoring and, you know, spending a day or a half a day listening to the presentations and then scoring them again.
Well, and I have heard in the past that there's a bit of, you know, imbalance in the presentation, whether they're slick or not, you know what I mean, making a difference? So it may equal out the playing field if you're looking at what we can do as a company as opposed to how slickly we can present it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, and I have to add, I love that you're looking at the energy of the future, because we have to learn how to be sustainable, and the schools we're building today hopefully will last for generations. So, thank you.
You.
Okay, that concludes our advisory committee presentations, and we are moving now to presentations, actually, two presentations that Attorney DePree Bruno is going to make on policies, and I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. DePree Bruno to start with Policy 1.11, pre-briefing.
Thank you. Are you getting it up? Oh, okay. Thank you. So with regards to Policy 1.11, the biggest change is that we took the public comment portion of it out and have created a new public comment policy. The other changes in this policy is some, basically some upkeep with regards to changing two business days in line 18 to 48 hours, so it's more in compliance with the statutory language, defining consensus a little bit, the use of consensus, implementing some of Robert's rules within the policy, so everybody's on the same page in terms of the votes, identifying who is the tiebreaker, if there is one. The board has, the chair has appointed Mr. Newland as our sergeant-at-arms, so this pretty much codifies that position. The minutes will be on board docs, and we added some additional language with regards to member conferences, emergency meetings, recesses, and some information as to taping or videotaping. And although we had this in another policy, I just wanted to make sure that it was also codified that the superintendent or his designate can take appropriate safety precautions for board meetings. Are there any questions with regards to 1.11?
Okay, and we have 15 minutes designated on this, so let's start with one question for a board member, and then we'll do a second round if we have time. Okay, so, Mrs. Gittens.
Oh, okay. Just kind of a generic question. As I'm looking through 1.11, a lot of the things that are in 1.111 are already in there, and they were just, you know, deleted. What was the thought process in not just adding to 1.11 and not doing an entirely different policy and procedure just for board comments?
That a lot of the different districts do have a separate policy for public comment, so they have a policy for meetings and then a policy for public comment.
And it couldn't have been like an addendum to or an additional part of this one as opposed to having a whole separate one for, you know?
I think it makes it a little bit cleaner, and the public can identify very quickly what their rules are in terms of public comment, so it's also ease of access.
Okay. I have, my questions are on one point.
Okay. So who else has a question or comment? Mrs. Patrica?
Yes, line 46. Please.
Yes.
That is limiting board member participation virtually or via telephone only if the board member is out of the county for board or district business. And I know that there were times early, early on in my tenure on the board where I was out of town for work, but it wasn't board or district work, and I know that some of us have other jobs, and I would hate to see us limited to that.
So is the board okay to change that and make that a little bit broader, that language, so it's not limited to board business or district business?
Okay. Comments, comments on that? Go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Well, isn't there a statute or something that talks about voting? Does that affect that? So in other words, you're just saying that, Ms. Patrica, that, you know, you can participate remotely, or how does that affect voting?
So there is a statute that addresses voting. This is, for example, for our briefings and our workshops, we don't need a physical quorum, and we have allowed board members to participate. For action meetings and special meetings, board members can attend via telephone but cannot vote on any measure. So that would stay the same. I think what Ms. Patrica is talking about is instead of just limiting it to board or district business, if I am traveling for pleasure or for other business, can I participate in all of these other meetings via telephone conference or, it would be telephone conference, can I do that, rather than it just being limited to board or district business? And I think in the past that board members have done that.
Can't you vote if you are ill, if you're sick, incapacitated, or whatever? So that's not listed in here.
Well, we have, I do not believe that we have allowed for voting at an action meeting. Consensus, yes.
But there is a statute, I understand that you can vote if you cannot physically, because of physical issues or illness.
Yes, that's in there.
It's in there.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I'll come back to you, Ms. Patric. Was there somebody else before I get back? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Patrica.
I just wanted to be clear, Attorney DePree Bruno, it was my understanding that the statute allowed us to vote if we're absent, as long as there's a physical quorum, if we were out of town for business reasons. I didn't think that it allowed us to vote if we were out of town for vacation. I would love to expand it to include out of town for anything, and I fought for that when I first got on the board, but I got pushed back from the board attorney at the time. So if you could provide clarity surrounding that, I would really like to expand it to include non, being out of town for non-business reasons, but it's my understanding the statute specifically permits me to vote if I'm out of town for work purposes.
Yes, what I'm talking about is the consensus, when you're looking at the workshops and the briefings, that's what I'm specifically referencing, participation by telephone.
Okay.
Okay, other comments? Yes, Ms. Jordan?
I guess I was just wanting to know why, what was the reason for us trying to change this? Because, I mean, me personally, I believe that you need to be here. If we have a meeting, you need to be here and do the work. But if a person has been out because they had to do XYZ, they have been permitted to call in and participate in the, hi, Ms. Fisher, participate in the workshops or briefing, and then they would also be able to do consensus at that point in time. This has nothing to do with the action meeting. So I'm not sure why, why were we going to change the, what was the point of changing the verbiage on that one?
So it says board district business before it just said business, and there have been discussions on the dais with regards to where is this person, are they doing business, or are they doing district business? I mean, so that has been a discussion. So this was trying to clarify, and it's up to the board what the board wants to do in terms of that language.
So if I may, so then, could you please just then elaborate, what would be business? Vacation is not business.
No, this says business.
So business and monitor in the business.
This has come up, this has come up when, for example, you have a board member who's going to a FSBA meeting. Is that board business, or is that district business, or is that personal business? So that has come up. That's why there was a request for clarification in terms of what kind of business are we talking about?
Okay. Ms. Gittens, did you have a comment?
Yeah, not on the exact same thing.
Let's see if there's anybody else, because I was going to comment on this one. Anybody else? I'll come back on this designation. I agree with how Ms. Jordan began her comment, that we need to, as board members, try to schedule any time that we're going to be out of town around meetings, because we do have flexibility. I know personally, just scheduling appointments and those kinds of things, it's why I don't like the last minute surprises on things, because I don't like to miss. And I think the way it is here, board slash district business commitments, that would extend to FSBA, or if you're a legislative liaison and you're meeting with one of our local delegation members, anything like that. But vacation, and it's not here, but I would say definitely no, or just your own private business, I would say no on those. So I don't have a problem, because, am I, Mr. DePree Bruno, are I reading that correctly? Board slash district?
Yes, ma'am.
Would mean anything having to do, it wouldn't necessarily be this board, but it could be FSBA, it could be legislative meetings and, right?
That would be the intention.
Okay, and I like it the way it is right now, this change. Do you need any kind of a consensus on that, or are we?
Just a consensus to move this forward to first reading.
To do, I didn't.
What's this part, or should we?
It's 1.11.
Okay, we're not, yeah, we have other comments. All right, Ms. Gittens, and then Ms. Giavanelle.
Okay, well, I spoke before you, you want her to go first, and then I can go?
Now, go ahead, since we moved off of this board/district, line 46.
Page two, line, I believe, 56, and there's a discussion about consensus, and we've talked extensively about consensus in the past, and the use of it, and the overuse of it, and how often we use it, and its efficacy and all of that. So I would kind of, since this is just the first reading, I would really like to perhaps in a workshop bring up the discussion of consensus, to see where we're at, how far-reaching, and, you know, the bindingness. It does say, where is it down here, about pursuant to Robert's Rules of Order or whatever, and maybe that should be discussed. What is that?
Yes, so in your pre-ORG next Thursday, consensus, I believe, is one of the topics that you will be discussing, and line 56 through 67 is there to provide some guidance, because I know that has been an issue in the past, and just to make sure that all of the board members understand the policy and the use of consensus. And then it's very, very clear that you use it, move it forward, but the action vote must be taken at an action meeting. So that's why, to make it very, very clear, everybody's on the same page, that's why I'm making that recommendation that we add that in there, as well as the rest of it in terms of once that action vote is taken, then the board abides by the action vote. But you'll have more of a discussion on consensus at the next, at your pre-ORG.
And in the process, this is the first briefing, and then how many more do we have along the way?
So this is a pre-brief. We haven't even started the actual rulemaking process. If the board desires to move this forward, then we will move it forward to a first reading. If the board wants to take a look at it one more time before we actually start the rulemaking process, advise me the same, and we'll have another review of the policy.
And at what time in that process does the public give input?
The public will have an opportunity to give input today during this briefing. If we move forward to the first reading, they'll have another opportunity to give input, because that is also a briefing. And then when this goes to the final reading for the public hearing, the public will also have an opportunity to speak on this policy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, before I call on Ms. Giavanelle, anything else on this consensus? Okay, Ms. Giavanelle.
Actually, I have a question on the consensus, which is 3C, line 46. So consensus taking at workshops and briefings, and then in there, it says honoring that when it comes back to the action meeting. I have an issue with that, because I personally could receive some information that would make me change my consensus. I don't really, I have a, I think we use the consensus a little too loosely sometimes, so I'm a little concerned over that, and I won't support that change, because I think that boxes me in, and my vote could be my vote until I vote. So I think that we need to respect the vote when it happens, but until that point, I could have some information that I, that would allow me to change my vote or my consensus to a vote.
It's on the other one.
So I won't be supporting 3C at all with that verbiage.
Madam Chair, I believe she's on the other document.
No, I'm on.
No, she's on.
One, 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 one.
Yeah, I'm on the.
No, um, where are you? She's on 56.
3C, line 46.
Okay, and I.
56.
56, excuse me.
Okay, if you go down, unless new information is discovered.
Right, well, but new information may be only me, and so I.
Oh, but that, Ms. DePree Bruno, actually, let's have Ms. DePree Bruno address that.
The way that it is worded is, the board is cautioned that the results of consensus are relied upon by individual board members, and unless new information is discovered, board members shall make effort to honor the consensus. So the reason that's there is because of some of the past experience. So the reason that's there is because of some of the past experiences with regards to consensus. So if there's new information, there's new information. This is not a binding vote. Your binding vote is at action meetings. But I know that there's been some discussions and some concerns with regards to consensus. So this serves more as a guide for the Board in terms of the use of consensus.
Okay, Ms. Fisher.
Yes, so... Thank you. So it was my understanding that when we have the consensus, it's an agreement that we all want to move the item forward, but we will not have a vote until an action meeting. So we have plenty of opportunity, if we get new information, to consider that.
Okay, anybody who hasn't spoken yet want to speak on this? Because we... Let's get a couple more comments on this and then move it to anything else from this policy. Okay, Mrs. Patrica, go ahead.
So my question is this. If we reach consensus to have yellow playground equipment, and I am advocating for blue, and I'm advocating for blue, and I'm giving you all of the reasons why the combination of colors that create blue is the best way to go for our students for every reason. This paragraph basically says, every time this topic comes up, I don't continue to argue for blue for the very same reasons. Instead, if new information comes to me that proves that blue is absolutely the best for kids, I can present that new information as part of the discussion. But any arguments I've made up to that point really have already been heard by the Board and sort of reiterating those is counterproductive. Is that kind of what I'm reading here?
That's part of the thought process behind it. And remember, when you're at your action meeting and you're taking your vote on your motion, you will again have an opportunity to have discussion. So this is really to address some of the issues that have been... You know, that has happened in the past and to provide some guidance on it.
Do you like my yellow playground?
I know, that's my parliamentary procedure example.
And I'll get to it in a minute, Ms. Gittens. I want to clarify something, because the way Mrs. Patrica asked that, it sounded like on the consensus, she was for the blue and the Board voted for, you know, the consensus was for the yellow. But if, let's say, it was me and I voted... I wanted to see the blue, and I still like the blue, I wouldn't have to change my vote.
That's correct.
So I just wanted to clarify that, because I'm not sure if I was mishearing what Ms. Patrica said, but it sounded like she was saying, well, on the consensus, the Board liked the yellow. And so I can't know on yellow.
Like... No, I can't... As we move forward, I shouldn't continue to rely on those original arguments. When I sit here and I tell you why blue is better the first time, I don't rely on those same arguments second, third, and fourth time it comes from the Board. But if new information comes my way, then...
Right, well, okay. But I just wanted to clarify, because I was a little hesitant on what exactly... How exactly that was being said.
And of course...
Bottom line on this is, it's just... We can change our mind. And we can change our mind, because there's time between a consensus and a final vote. And if we have new information, it's... I think it's just there for...
Guidance.
Things a little smoother, perhaps?
Yes, and then remember, it does not become an actionable item till it comes to your meeting as an action vote. You do your motion, and then at that point, you will have discussion. So maybe even in that discussion, you change your mind, and then you do your actual vote.
Right. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Well, in response to Ms. Patrica's discussion, I don't think we can mandate other Board members that if you brought up something once, you cannot bring it up again. And kind of what the attorney just said, when it comes up in the action meeting, there is time for discussion. And if you want to discuss it and whatever, I think we all have the right to discuss whatever comments we would want to make at that time. That's just my opinion. I am wondering, as we're looking at policy and the wording of policy in line 58, the Board has cautioned that the results of consensus are relied upon by individual Board members. I just... I don't see where that is really necessary in that we're saying we define what consensus is. We define that it's not binding. We define that when it comes up again, we can discuss or whatever. So the verbiage that the Board has cautioned kind of gives me a little bit of angst.
Ms. Gittens, if it says the results of consensus are relied upon, would that be better?
Taking out the caution would be helpful to me.
Oops, sorry. It seems like that the consensus is a bit of a sticking point. And so we've already agreed that we are, during the Board pre-reorganization, going to talk about this. So because we're running a little over, I'd like to move it to anything else. Get away from that, which we will discuss at length later. Anything else that you want to bring up that you would like our Attorney to tweak or do something specific with? Any other sticking points? Okay, Mrs. Jivinelli?
On the item number four, like line 78, but it's actually really 70... Oh, no, 80. Can you explain the 14... Why the 14... From 14 days to 18 days notice? Because why the change, just that? And I was just curious. And then, and then number 4E, Board Docs. And you're taking out the website, but why can it not be on both places? That's the two questions I have. Thanks.
18 days is because of the time crunch that staff has in putting everything on the agenda. So I have to review it, and Dr. Desmore has to review it. And sometimes we're getting it, you know, that weekend. Or so we just built in some extra time for us to be able to review. And then with regards to the website and Board Docs, we're trying to put everything on Board Docs. So that's the main hub for all of the information in terms of anything related to the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Final on this, Ms. Fisher?
Thank you. So is the 18 days 18 business days? Or is it 14 business days?
It's been like two weeks. So it's calendar days. So we added...
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Gittens?
Okay, everybody's too serious, so I have to lighten it up. Line 68, I think the tiebreaker should be rock, paper, scissors.
I wish I could do that.
That's it.
All right. Anything else? Because we do need to close this out and move on to the next policy. Yes?
Real quick on that scenario, thank you, regarding the tie... The chair being the tie vote. In a situation where we only have six members, and it becomes 3-3, then the chair gets a second vote. Right.
The chair does not get a second vote per statute. Wherever the chair is, that's the way the vote goes.
But then it becomes a 3-3. Then what happens? That's a tie then.
Oh, you're talking about if the... It's still... It's a tie, but the chair is the tiebreaker.
Did you just say...
So wherever the chair is.
The chair lands. If the chair is yea, then it moves forward. If the chair is nay, then it...
So it's kind of like two votes, though? Kind of? Because it...
Well, it's not necessarily two votes per se. She...
But she has a heavy vote.
She has a... We can call it a heavy vote.
Because it's the final.
That's per statute.
Okay. That's all. I'm just... If we're down to six and...
Okay, so I think we are to the point, since this is just a pre-reading and we have a lot more ahead, that we're at the point for the consensus to move it along to a second reading? Is that correct?
It'll be moved along to the first reading. And again, your pre-reorg is next Thursday. So you'll have an opportunity to discuss the census... I'm sorry, the consensus part of it. And then I can incorporate that discussion in the next draft.
Okay, so moving it to what? It's called the first reading, actually.
First reading. That will start the rulemaking policy.
All right, so let's have consensus on moving this to the first reading. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Patrica?
I'm sorry, no.
Okay, Ms. Jivinelli?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And I say yes. So it's 6-1 to move it along. Okay, so we're now going to move to Mrs. DePree Bruno's presentation of 1.111.
So 1.111, the whole basis or the structure of it is really from the prior policy that we had, the prior language from 1.11. The highlights of this is, one, at an action meeting... So I'm trying to find the sweet spot for both the Board so it can conduct its business, as well as hearing from the constituents who are concerned about their ability to exercise their First Amendment rights. So the sweet spot seems to be the following. During the action meeting, the constituents will be able to speak specifically on an agenda item, just like we do in briefings. That will be during the meeting. And then at the end, the constituents will be able to speak on anything that's related to the district. So that's the major change. The other change is moving the public comment to earlier in the meeting versus at the end in our briefings. Judicial, quasi-judicial hearings, workshops, special requests, and all of that is the same. Personal attack has been removed so that we are more in line with some of the case law. Since we now have a sergeant-at-arms, that individual has been incorporated into this policy. And that's really the gist. There is no additional public comment during special action meetings. That is limited to the agenda as well.
Okay, and I'm going to do something slightly different here. And I'm going to ask you, Mr. DePree Bruno, to elaborate on the rationale of that second public. And because I have the feeling that there's going to be a lot of commentary on that. So if you would say the rationale, and then, Board members, I'm going to ask you to respond to that.
I think it brings us a little bit more in line with some of the cases that are out there. The rationale is there's two competing forces. So the public wants to be able to speak and have their First Amendment rights. There's been a lot of emails and questions about some of the limitations from our prior policy. And keeping that in the back of my mind, as well as the fact that the Board is concerned about being able to do its business and conduct its business in an orderly fashion. So the thought is that for the action meetings, we have this public comment on agenda items specifically. So the Board can just do its work, hear from the public on specific agenda items. Then, once we have completed the business, if the public wants to talk about anything else that they want to talk about, so long as it's related to the operation of the district, they're free to do so.
Okay, and I lost where it is, but I know when I read it, it's after the meeting has been adjourned?
Yes, so we complete the business meeting and then open it up for comments.
Okay, and this time, I'm just going to start with Ms. Fisher and get...
And I will tell you, I can't cite it right now, but there is a fact pattern, a case that's very similar to this, where the... I believe it was a mayor who was trying to control public comment and in terms of what was being said and was instructing the constituents to speak only on the agenda item. And the person refused to do so. The person was escorted out. First Amendment claim was filed. And the court rationalized that the mayor is within his rights to keep it within the agenda, specifically since there was an opportunity at the end of the meeting for the constituents to speak on whatever they wanted to speak to. So that's where the model is coming from.
Okay, all right. So let's just go down and everybody make a comment on how you're feeling about this. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, so I did a little research with a couple of other districts. And I also had contact from a constituent who said that he observed many hours of our Board meetings and that out of something like almost 12 hours, we spent 54 minutes on business. So I think that this gives us an opportunity to conduct our business, finish our business, and yet still afford people their First Amendment rights, where if they have other items that they wish to discuss that are regarding the district, they will have that opportunity to do that at the conclusion of our business.
Okay, Ms. Jivinelli, do you have an opinion, comment on this?
I do, I have... I'll go with a comment and opinion. Opinion first. I have a hard time supporting this, because I believe in the rights of our public. They're technically my boss. So I... You know, there's stuff like inappropriate, irrelevant remarks. You know, that discretionary, I think that's some... That's been an issue of what? Is it appropriate and inappropriate and irrelevant? And I think that some of the public feels slighted in some of that. I feel like the... We're losing our own accountability as far as we need to be held accountable, and this is our time. That's our... This is our... This is their moment to hold us accountable. And so, you know, I talk about that a lot, being transparent and accountable. The other thing about not able to have hand gestures, I guess we could...
Okay, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but let's just stay on this one thing, and then we'll come to that hand gestures.
Which one thing? It's the whole thing?
No, we're gonna... As I said, I'm going to try something a little different to keep us really focused. And let's... We'll come back to the hand gestures, Ms. Jivinelli, if you don't mind.
I'm having a difficult time approving this. How's that?
Okay, and we're looking at, just as a reminder, just the portion that is having the two public comment times.
Oh, that section. Well, I... Okay, so how are we going to limit that to only 20 people? That was... That's the problem I have with that on line 129. So, you know, are we... So we're going to have two public comments. So we're going to have one that's an hour at the beginning, only on the agenda, and then the other portion be limited to 20 people for 40 minutes. So, I mean, I just... I'm having a hard time for that being fair. So I really want to hear what everybody else has to say, because that's important. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Patrica.
So I think that it is important to recognize that we are conducting the business of a nearly $2 billion organization and that the public's comments with regard to the decisions that are right in front of us are very, very important for us to consider. And comments that go beyond that are... Can lead to confusion and make it difficult for me, at least, to stay focused on the business that's in front of me that evening. So I do appreciate the splitting out of the, you know, agenda comments at the beginning, so I can digest those and they can impact my decision-making, which is immediate. And then the comments at the end of the meeting on any item affecting the district, I think is appropriate as well. And I don't necessarily have a concern with the limitation. I mean, it might just be me getting old, I mean, it might just be me getting old, but after a certain period of time, I just, I can't digest any more information. Sitting at this table, it gets to be too late, I just can't digest any more information. And we're actually expanding the amount of public comment allowed to an hour and 40 minutes. So, I see this as actually being more inclusive than it was previously. So, I support this portion. And I also have some comments on the other portions, but I'll wait until I've directed.
And we will come back to that, I promise. Ms. Jordan, do you have any comments on this portion about the two public comments?
No, as far as the two public comments, I believe that it will be better for us as far as being able to conduct the business of the board. So, once we have that first, and this has still given them the opportunity, the public the opportunity to come back and speak on whatever they're feeling, or whatever other information they may want to give to us. But at least that allows us to do what we need to do, take care of that, and then we move on to the next steps. So, I'm okay with this.
Okay, Ms. Gittens, on this section?
I'm having a hard time with it. Just listening to a couple of comments from my colleagues. One said, quote, "When we finish our business." Another said, "At the end, it's difficult to digest anymore after we've been here." We're here on action meeting days from sometimes 10, 11:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night. And I would find it, first of all, difficult to stay focused on a myriad of comments about just kinda everything. I find that the comments at the beginning help to focus the meeting. I'm not sure of the effectiveness of doing a second set after, "We're tired, they're tired, everybody's been here a long time." I'm not sure of the efficacy of that. I am concerned as well about 20 individuals speaking. I honestly think that we should leave it as, you know, the number of individuals that show up, and we divide up the time, and it's just simple and quick and easy. This really does concern me about doing that. I don't know that I would support having two times for public comment. I don't know that we would give the public our full attention at that time, depending on when it is. And would we really be listening, so?
Okay, Ms. Ford?
Well, I can say that we actually did try this for one year as a board. Do you remember that, Ms. Fisher? Yeah, we did, we went through the same conversation once before. And we split it up, and then we reverted back after a year. That, and that being said, I understand and agree with, the business should be dealt with, you know, at the business time, and everything else should be treated separately. So, I'm fine with splitting it. As I said, I didn't see much of a difference, we didn't see much of a difference. We just tightened up our meetings when we brought it all back to one. But then we didn't really have an issue with public comment at that time either, so.
Okay, and frankly, I'm torn, I'm listening to my board colleagues, what they have to say. I'm a little bit torn about this. But, the area that I have an issue with is in D, where it says, "Following the adjournment of an action meeting." I think that is a problem right there. If I were to go with this, I would say that when we finish our business, and before we do our board member comments, we should have the opportunity for individuals to speak. And we can play with the number, and I think 20 individuals is probably, considering the length of some of our meetings, is probably a good number. But anyway, that's beside the point. To me, the sticking point is, why would we do it after the meeting is adjourned? Because when the meeting is adjourned, the lights go out, and we're no longer an official board meeting. We're no longer, you know, the people that want to make points, and for the people out there in viewer land, I'm guessing they wouldn't have the opportunity to listen to this either. So, I'm a little conflicted still on, one, the way we've been doing it, or two. But, if it is two, I would, A, like to see it be before the meeting is adjourned. And B, perhaps, yeah, before, actually before the board member comments, which would give us, as a board, the ability to individually respond, should we feel compelled to do so.
So, the attempt is to, again, find that sweet spot. Because of the tenor and the amount of public comments that we have been having, the statute actually says that the public has an opportunity to speak prior to the board voting on a proposition. The public does not have an opportunity to come and just speak. That's pursuant to the statute, depending on how the board wants to craft its policy. Now, we have in our policy that the public can come and speak about anything that deals with the operation of the school district. So we're trying to continue to allow that to happen, but at the same token, allow for the board to do its business, and have the public come in and say, "I would like to speak on item L1." And they talk about item L1. And then the board can hear all of the discussions from the public, and then, you know, move forward with its motion. But, that's what's required in the statute. It's not a free-for-all to come in and just say whatever I want to say, because this is a limited public forum.
Okay, but it doesn't, from what I just said, it doesn't prohibit us from opening a second?
And that's why we want to do that, so that the public can come in and provide feedback on anything else that they want to provide feedback with. And I have, so, it's a difficult situation, because we want to be, we want to be viewpoint-neutral. We want to be content-neutral, and we want them to be able to come in and say whatever they want to say. So, I want to allow that to happen. But if we have it at the end of our business, after the board has made its comments, after the business is done, because good-of-the-order board member comments are part of the business, then the public can come in and say whatever they want to say.
Alright, but, that's, I understand all that and the rationale, but I disagree. And for me, unless it's going to be on the record, and we would have to have certain limitations, because they would have to abide by, you know, things having to do with the district. But, one of the problems with limiting just to what's on the agenda is, we have some wonderful things coming in. People, for instance, art teachers coming in and saying, "Thank you, board, for continuing to support." I don't want to keep going on about this. But, it's my opinion that if the law doesn't prohibit, that I would just as soon see it, if we go for two, before adjournment, so it's on the record, so it's out there in viewer land, and that's my opinion on it. Let's go real quick on second thoughts and responses. Ms. Fisher, and then Ms. Gittens?
So then, I interpreted that after the business meeting to mean that we would have more opportunity then to hear the suggestions and the concerns of the public, and to have more of a two-way conversation, because we would not be under, you know, we would not have the meeting, the business meeting would be concluded, and then that would be time for us to be able to interact more with the public, and to hear their concerns and their ideas, which many of them are excellent. And then we could interact and give them some of the response that they may be wanting or expecting right at that time. Kind of like those public days that were suggested to us, and we'd already all be here. So, I thought that that might be an opportunity for us to improve some of the relationships with our community.
Okay, Ms. Gittens?
Well, and thank you for reminding me of the public days, Ms. Fisher. I think that's what that's for. And we've been discussing having a public day where we can interact. As it stands now, when we have a meeting, the public speaks in the beginning. We, as a board, do not comment except for the chair. So, are we talking about, I have a question first, and then a comment. But are we talking about, then the meeting finishes, and then the public gets to speak, and we get to interact with them? That's not in here as to what our part of that is. It just says they'll have so many minutes to speak. So are we sitting here, and only the chair have a response again? I feel it's kind of overkill. I feel that we should, my feeling is to leave it as it is, let people talk about what they want to. We have a limited time, it's already in the policy, that we have, what, 60 minutes to do this? And then if we have the public days, people can write, people can send emails, they can contact us in other ways. I am very concerned about what, we have 20 peoples with two minutes, so you're talking 40 minutes. And if any of us have comments to any of that, we could be here forever, and there's not a statute that says, like in the other one, it says we have to finish by 11. And that's not in here, so we could go on ad infinitum. And I just feel it's simpler. I put myself in the place of someone sitting in the audience, and if you say, "Well, I'll hear from you about other things when we finish our business." The connotation is, this is after the fact. This is not to do with the business that we are doing. And I just think separating so many things out, and the time factor, so for various reasons, I'm not supporting it.
Are there other comments on this? Okay, well, this is an area of contention, obviously. So, Mrs. DePree Bruno, it looks like we need a whole lot more discussion that we don't have time for right now on just this portion. How do you want to deal with that?
Can, if the board wants to send individually suggestions on how to improve the policy, you can send that to me, and then we can pre-brief this once more.
Okay, and I'm, as I said, I'm looking right now just at this, because this seems, it's extremely controversial, because it really changes. And, you know, I had one idea, and then Ms. Fisher brought up the idea of, which I wasn't seeing at all, of interacting. Well, that's, as Ms. Gittens said, that's more like Community Day, or whatever. That's not like a board meeting. So, I think we don't have the time to delve deep, more deeply into that. So let's just do it that way, maybe send comments. And that you keep in mind that this is a big issue for us, and it could go either way. Let's move it to anywhere else in this. I know Mrs. Jivinelli started with a couple things that she just bring up, one or two things that you, you were gonna bring up about hand gestures and something else, Ms. Jivinelli.
She actually had her hand up.
Oh, is it on? Was on the same thing about the meetings.
Let her go then, because I already got it.
I will do a really, I will do a really fast.
These two things we just talked about?
Correct, but I will be, I will be quick about it.
Alright.
Because, just when Ms. Gittens was speaking on about if we were sitting out there in the audience. Well, when I sit up here and I look in the audience, I am knowing that they're coming here because of, that most of them have seen the agenda, they have something to share with us regarding what is on that agenda. This gives them a perfect opportunity to speak about what we are voting on, what we're speaking about. And not only that, when I look out there and I see the staff that's sitting here all hours of the night as well, if we get that finished, do the work that we're here to do, allow staff to go home, then we continue on the process to hear, to open it back up, to hear whatever anybody wants to speak about. That gives them the forum to, again, speak twice. Sometimes they get to speak three times, depends, depending upon what we're doing that evening. So, this allows them that opportunity. So, that's why I think that is a good idea.
Okay, Ms. Jivinelli, go ahead and open it to the other points.
Okay.
And we're just gonna go through this very quickly, because we're way over already, and we have a full agenda.
Yeah, I'm surprised we only were given 20 minutes, so that's-
I am too.
So that's an issue in itself, so that's another conversation. But, as I mentioned earlier, regarding inappropriate, irrelevant remarks, I'm sorry, shall be ruled out of order. I mean, I think, whose discretion? I have a, I have a hard time, because I think what, some people are offended by one thing, and some people are offended by another, and so I think, and we need to be practicing that as well up here at the dais. So, and if we're expecting that in the community, I mean, we gotta lead by example. So, that's one of the things. The hand gestures, I think that, I understand they don't want clapping and that kind of thing, but we could designate, like, when I first started coming to board meetings, they used to do this. And there's no noise with that, and I don't, I'm sorry, but I think that they should be allowed to do something to that, and, you know, some of them are doing this knocking. But, I mean, whatever, I think maybe we could decide on something, but taking away the hand gestures completely, I mean, are we gonna just handcuff them before they come in the door? So, I mean, you know, I just, I have a hard time censoring the public, because this is, this is why we have open meetings, and so if we don't want to hear what they're saying, then why bother? I mean, I think that's, I mean, that's, that's, this whole, this whole policy, I mean, I just, I have a problem with it all. And, so I'm just having a hard time, and I have a lot of questions. I've got question marks by a lot of things, so, I mean, I guess I need to wait and hear what everybody else says too, because I'm sure I'm not the only one. I do have one question that I'd like to throw it back to the superintendent. And, do you agree with this, the policy changes? You know, Dr. Savage?
I was not involved in the development of this piece. I'm really the executive, so my role is to execute whatever the policy is created by the board. I think the discussion that we're having is very appropriate, to be kind of weighing and balancing. The best advisement I can give is, it's very important to look at what all the other districts do, because I think what other districts do gives us insight into this balancing act that Attorney DePree Bruno was mentioning. There's a definite interest in wanting to hear from the public, as well as wanting this board to conduct their business. I think all communities are slightly different, so it's, for me, the wondering in my mind is always, how do other districts go about looking at this? Knowing that we have many districts that are very large, some much bigger than ours, very diverse, lots of different opinions and thoughts, and so, I'm, that would be kind of my feedback on this piece.
Well, thank you. So, for me, it was important to know how, what staff thinks and feels about it, because this is, I think this is how we should be collaborating with staff. And so, it's important to have their opinion and their insight on this, because we look to them for so much. So, that would, that was one of my question, questions and concerns that I had. I mean, the other thing I had, and just in my notes, you know, this is just about accountability, and this is, again, like I said earlier, I mean, this is the opportunity for the community to hold us accountable. You know, this building is a public building, it's owned by the community. So I think we need to make sure we keep them in mind when we're making all these decisions for their opportunity to address the board. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gittens, go ahead.
Okay, a couple of things just to note that I have questions on. 2A, line 32. I had a question, sorry, I got away from it. The section, "This opportunity will not be required if the matter addressed in the motion will be placed on a subsequent agenda before final action is taken." I don't understand that one, I'm not quite sure what you mean. So, after discussion, motion, school board, and before the vote is taken, okay. This opportunity will not be required if the matter will be placed. So, who decides then? In other words, we would make a motion on the yellow or the green, whatever, and it's put aside, so, because, but when there's a motion made, and a second, I believe the order would go, then there has to be some discussion or public input. That part's confusing to me, and then somewhere it also talks about, if it's a vote on something simple, like, you know, do we turn up the air or turn down the lights? I get that, but all of that together kind of is very subjective. And, such as, I can skip down to line 138, and if you want to mark that, I have a question. Inappropriate and irrelevant are very subjective as to who decides what's inappropriate. It's kind of very broad. And, on, where it is, line 100 on page three, "The affidavit process." That came up at another meeting or sometime, and I believe counsel had told us that there is a process that they go through to make complaints or whatever. And I brought up the suggestion that, have we, I guess, educated the public as to what that process is, or where to find it? And I know there's an affidavit that has to be signed and notarized and all that. And even though we say it prior to public comment, have we provided it? Or maybe we put copies of it in the back of the room, so people are aware, this is what you have to fill out. So that's the suggestion on that. And the last one on 180, line 187. Hold on, I'm getting there. Whenever public speakers come in, raise legal issues that may adversely impact the board. They provide, a parliamentarian provides verbal instruction. I'm concerned that, I get it, that we say this could be a legal issue. I'm concerned that, I get it, that we say this could be a legal issue. It's also a very fine line for censorship and we have to be very careful, you know, when we say it, what we say it. I guess overall, one of my issues is there's a lot of subjectivity to the process here. And it does concern me. Thank you.
I need to make a comment here because we were allotted 20 minutes to discuss a policy that's over five pages long. And there are so many issues that I want to discuss and I want to keep it open. And on the other hand, and this has been, and I'm just going to say it, this has been an ongoing problem with our briefing meetings that we are bound in too tightly. And then, you know, the briefing basically is the only meeting where if we don't finish at a certain time, we might wind up with no dinner. I get very cranky with no dinner. And I, you know, I just don't, I'm going to throw it to Mr. DePree Bruno. This needs lots, lots more. We've just barely touched the surface of this. When, and maybe to Mrs. Jordan, when could we reopen this so that we can address all of these and have more than 20 minutes? Because I'm having a problem with that because we could spend the next hour doing this. And I think it would be appropriate, there's enough stuff to talk about, but we have a full agenda of other things as well. So, what do you, between you and Chair Jordan, what do you suggest on a time that we could come back and do this justice with our comments?
We can pre-brief this again, Ms. Vaughn. Again, this is the process to bring this to the Board, for you to have a discussion, tell me the concerns. I go back and I redraft and give it back to you and vice versa. So, we can continue to discuss this. One thing I do want to make sure that the Board understands, some of this language is not new. This is what was in Board Policy 1.11. What Ms. Jivinelli talked about, the inappropriate comment, that was there before with regards to the charge, that was there before. This is not new things. The only thing that's really new is what I highlighted, which is adding the second public comment so that we can hit that sweet spot. The public can be able to discuss what they want to discuss and the Board can do its business. But the rest of this stuff really has been there since 2017, I think, is the last time it was revised.
Well, but therein lies the problem because this is also our opportunity to revise things, even if they were there in the past. So...
So, Ms. Vaughn, we'll just come back and do this because I know this is what Mr. DePree Bruno thought that was needed for this.
Okay.
And I know we all had this in advance for us to look at, but conversation definitely needs to be had. So, we will certainly look at a timeframe where we have ample time to have this whole conversation.
Will that work, Board members? Will that work to come back and have, give this policy the time that it deserves? Okay, Mrs. Patrica?
Yeah, but I'd like to make my first round of comments on this.
Sure. If you haven't made a comment yet on the thing, all of this as a whole, do that and then we're going to close it out.
All right, just three quick things.
Yeah, sure.
And I did provide you with, what, a two-page email with all of my concerns as well. And you and I did discuss, Attorney DePree Bruno, my concern regarding the elimination of placards in the boardroom. I understand that if holding of signs blocks the view of anyone in the boardroom, they're not permitted. And I don't know whether, you know, there's, we could have a section where that's allowed or something. And again, with the understanding that we are conducting the business of a $2 billion organization, and this is not a political rally, this is the business of a $2 billion organization. Line 191, it's my understanding that we need a supermajority to alter any of our policies. So, I'm not sure why we wouldn't require a supermajority to change the public comment limits, numbers, whatever. That's another concern that I have. And I would like to add the prohibition against candidates discussing their candidacy for any public office during a public board meeting. That should not be permitted. I have seen that in board meetings across the state, school board meetings across the state. And then there was one other. Oh, the hand gestures, I don't have any problem with them. I would just, in fact, I think it's a way for the public to sort of get out some frustration or agreement or whatever without interrupting the meeting. I would just like it if you could add the word appropriate to the hand gestures. Those are my comments for now. And again, I provided all of these to Attorney DePree Bruno.
Yeah, and I think those of us who have not probably need to do that as well. Who has not had an opportunity to address in general and wants that opportunity before we close this out? Ms. Fisher?
Okay, so I'm looking at Section 9 and the decorum. So, I would like to see that maybe shortened and refined and take into consideration some of the remarks from some of my colleagues regarding the disruptive behavior, the hand gestures, et cetera. I think it seems to me to be a little bit too cumbersome. And I think that we do need to provide adequate education to the public so that it's clearly understood. And I also, in Section 9A, I wondered if instead of shall not be tolerated, could we say is not permitted? Because I think that the shall not be tolerated is too strong. You know, I attend meetings at the Cape Coral City Council, at the County Commission, and when people's behavior is improper by, considered improper by the parliamentarium or the chairperson, I've seen people barred from meetings for extended periods of time. So, I think that we want our meetings to have decorum, we want them to be businesslike. And in order to do that, I think we want to also keep in mind that we want to be welcoming to our public because the public input is so important for us to run this $2 billion organization. Thank you.
Anybody else who has not addressed this portion, basically the rest of this, and would like to, before we close it out? Did you need to say anything? Anybody else who has not had an opportunity? Okay, so we're going to close this out because we're running quite a bit behind. And...
Vaughn?
Yes, go ahead.
I may request, Board members, if you do have suggestions or concerns or what have you, please send them to me so that I can take that into consideration for the next draft.
Yeah, and I'm glad you said, I was just about to say basically the same thing. What Ms. Patrica did was good, proactive on it. And those of us like me who has not done, who have not done that, if you have issues and at least that way, in our next conversation, we will have a focus that we can look at those things that people have brought up and focus on that.
So, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, when you send this back to us...
1.111, I believe, is all red, right?
Yes.
Okay, is there any chance that you can make changes in black? Do you understand what I'm saying? When you bring this back to us, you're going to incorporate today's comments. So, can you, or highlight them? Do something so that I don't have to read it line for line again?
We'll highlight it.
All right, great, thanks.
Sounds great. And yes, go ahead.
Is there an option then to combine them? I know you said, Attorney, that a lot of the things we're talking about were already in it. And I would like for us to look back at, there's six pages of one and nine of another. Well, if a lot of the stuff that was taken out, can't we just combine it? Rather than having a separate kind of, this is the decorum for the, you know, for the audience type thing, it's all a part of our meeting.
I know you're asking Mr. DePree Bruno, but I would say just put it on the list that you sent to her because there may be other people that feel the same way and it'll be a focus point for our next discussion because we really do need to...
So, I would just point out to the Board...
My piece.
I would just point out to the Board that 1.11 is nine pages, 1.11 is six pages.
Right.
So, you would have a policy that is 15 pages.
No, because you said that there were a lot of things already on that policy and they were crossed off.
It's been taken out of 1.11 and new things have been added to 1.11.
But what I would like to see then is, you know, something where the things that were taken out and put in 1.11, you know, where are they?
They're here.
And if they stayed, they're already in 1.1. I'm just, anyway, I will discuss it, but I'd like to see it all together.
Put it on the list. Okay, we're moving ahead now to Executive Services and we are going to have a pandemic update. And the list of presenters that I have are our Superintendent, Dr. Ken Savage, Ms. Jessica Duncan, Executive Director of Student Services, and also Ms. Lauren Stillwell, Chief Engagement Officer. So, if those people would step up, please, and if there's anybody else that's presenting, go ahead and introduce yourself as you speak.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
From a slightly different vantage point, I am the thorn between two roses here, so there we are. Just wanted to thank you all again and just dynamic duo here on either side, Ms. Jessica Duncan and Ms. Lauren Stillwell, who have done an excellent job in their leadership through this piece. We're here today to share very briefly an update on the COVID mitigation. So, first and foremost, we're just going to be kind of going through a few of these different pieces. First, to outline the team that has been a part of the recommendations being brought forward to help not only the Board but the public and just in general, any of the stakeholders that have an interest in looking at the data. The interesting thing about this data is it's very transparent and accessible publicly. So, wanted to have a robust opportunity to review that as well as the analysis along to see where we are currently and presently in those areas as well as our locally county cases. Also, to orient you to the tiered mitigation and what we're actually, how these, how the strategies we implement are related to that data as well as the educational impact, which is so important when we're balancing the health mitigation. Would something like to outline the team piece of this? Jessica?
I can do med ed.
Or Lauren?
You want to do pandemic and I'll do med ed?
Yep.
Sure. So, we have our pandemic team, which is made up from leaders of each of our divisions. We look at any trends in the data. We also address any questions that our schools may have related to process and protocol. We also consider updates and bring those back to our leadership team for review. We meet sometimes up to four days a week, given the topics that we need to discuss during that week.
All righty. So, for our medical educational panel, this is a group comprised of folks internally, administrative folks internally, from our academic services team, also from professional development as well as ESE. And then externally, we have a number of medical professionals locally for Galasano Children's Hospital, Lee Health. We have some physician, excuse me, pediatricians that are on that group as well as some folks who actually also work for Lee Health and FSU, Florida State University. So, they've been integral in helping us take our mitigation strategies, help us determine the type of data that we should use to determine how to measure when to implement those mitigation strategies. We have been meeting once a week, Wednesdays. We have our hopefully last meeting tomorrow to finalize the matrix that we've come up with as well as to kind of determine the timeframe for the data, meaning how long would it take for us to ramp up our mitigation strategies and how long would we look at data to ramp them down? And so, we should be able to provide a recommendation to Dr. Savage, hopefully at the beginning of next week, which we can share out.
Thank you very much. And it just doesn't do enough to underscore the level of work and involvement and time and effort that has gone into this. But I think one thing that is wonderful to look at, a picture is worth 1,000 words. And so, built into this PowerPoint, so for anyone who can actually access this at home or anyone who has any interest in seeing this, if you were to click on this link, what it will take you to is the CDC website. And it's really important to kind of show you what that looks like. So, when you click on that link, it'll take you to a specific area. This is something so you can see as of each day, where are the COVID data that we are using, the specific data that we are looking at? And not only that, but you can look at it really all across the country and all around the rest of the state. So, the first thing you'd want to do is click on the county level community transmission. When you do that, it actually pulls up first a map of the entire United States. So, just kind of want to give you a quick orientation of what you see. You notice a lot of red. Well, that red really corresponds to a high level of community transmission and that really accounts for nearly 75% of the counties in the United States. So, that's why it looks very, very red. That's the highest level of community transmission based on the CDC scale, which we're going to get into a little bit more. About 16% of these counties, that's 524 counties, are in the substantial transmission level. Then about 8% are in the moderate level and then 1.86% are in the low level. So, there's really small flecks of blue that you see such as Jackson County, Colorado, and Elmore, Camas County, Idaho, those are in the low level. But what you're going to see now is you see the vast majority of the United States is in that upper level. But for us, what we're going to zoom in on is our specific state. So, we look at Florida relative to the rest of the country. Florida actually has a pretty good color pattern. So, what you can see here is that we only have two counties that are actually in that high transmission level currently, and that's Monroe and Glades. And if you were to click on this tomorrow, it may be different. And so, then what you will find though is Lee County is in the substantial level of transmission. But there's so much more data you can have here. So, you can click on the counties directly and what that will do is it'll pull you up to all this data. And so, we have essentially a significant amount of data that you can see. And it's not just today's data, you can actually see longitudinal trends as you scroll down. So, one that is particularly compelling for us is this right here. Because when we talk about the transmission rate, we're really talking about two specific metrics. That's the case rate and the positivity rate. So, the case rate is what you see graphically illustrated right here. So, this big mountain that you see, this was the most recent surge that we just went through. This goes all the way back to the beginning of the pandemic. So, in a quick glance, on a single page here, you can actually see the entirety of the pandemic in terms of its impact via the case rate through here. So, this kind of shows you the shape of that curve, shows how pronounced it was. Now, to orient you to the vertical axis to the left, what that tells you is this is a 1K, that means 1,000, that's a case rate for a seven-day case rate of over 1,000 during the peak in our community. And this is specific to Lee County. But you could click on any county in the United States and see how their trends were different. Some of them have a very sharp increase like we did and then a sharp decrease, others have a very different shaped curve. But what I want to kind of compare, just to see what we just went through with this most recent surge, was if you compare that to the first big summer surge that we had a year ago, this is the surge that our community went through back during the pandemic a year, more than a year ago now. And you can see right around the time of July, the case rate went up to just over 500 at its highest amount. You can see ours, this was a very different shape. So, I'm a big data person, but I love when data is shared visually because it's the same numeric data but expressed in a way that I think is a little bit easier to understand. And it helps to really provide context for what we just went through as an entire community. And we're not alone, of course, as we see the entire United States has been dealing with some of these challenges. But what I really want to show is where we are now relative to that area. So, what you can see is that our current case rate is substantially lower than where we have been through the majority of the pandemic. So, we are in much better territory. The other set of data that really is related to this piece is the positivity rate. So, you can see the positivity curve right below that. If you just scroll down, you can see, and again, this is the most frequent seven days, I'm sorry, the most recent seven days. And you can see that the positivity rate during the surge was much, much higher. And now you see the positivity rate has come down very, very low. Now, the reason why you don't look at positivity alone is because over or under testing could certainly influence that piece. Whereas the case rate is pretty important because that really is a very, that's a fair metric that you could really use to compare anywhere across the country, independent of that testing piece, knowing that this is such a great indicator for... knowing that this is such a great indicator for us to look at when you're trying to get those types of comparisons. And there's so much more there, though. There's vaccination rates, there's the death rates, there's a number of other pieces that you can look at. And this is something that is accessible to everyone, students, parents, community members, everyone. And it's a fantastic way to have context around this piece. So for those, we've heard some of the questions, some of the emails we get are, are you all just, you know, picking numbers out of a hat? You know, how are you making these decisions? It's based on this data. And that's why it was so important that the very first recommendation that came through our medical panel was to use this particular metric, that community transmission. So I just wanted to kind of have that be a piece of it. Now we're going to shift back to our slide. Okay. So the next rate is just, what are these four levels? So you saw the four colors, and again, we didn't invent those. Those are, those are listed by the CDC, and this tells you what those are. So these use the two, the two metrics that we discussed, both the case rate, as well as the percent positivity. And you'll notice that there's thresholds for each of these. So if it's an under 10 per 100,000 patients, that would be in the low rate. Also, a positivity rate less than 5%. Now, that is actually, our positivity rate in Lee County right now is less, is under 5%. So if you were to look at just our positivity alone, we would be classified as low transmission in Lee County, which is phenomenal. However, you'll notice, if you, if you remember what color we were, we were orange. And that's because our new, our case rate, if it's between in the orange category, substantial is between 50 and 99, that still places us in the substantial. We use the higher metric. And again, I mentioned earlier about that positivity rate, knowing that that's a variable impacted by how many people are actually getting tested. That case rate is a pretty fair metric to use. But it also accounts for why the majority of the United States is in the substantial and high categories. So if you really look at it, most of our counties in the entire country are substantial and high. And that's really due to that case rate being, so then why, why is the case rate so high? Well, that's where the delta, the specific delta variant has such an important piece of this. The delta, among its other features, highly contagious. When you have a highly contagious case, then naturally you would expect a higher case rate because it's more contagious. And it does go along with a lot of the respiratory flus, respiratory illnesses that we have. So I'm going to pause for a minute there because I've covered a lot of territory. And again, I am not an expert in this piece, but I've had to learn quite a bit to be able to speak about this. So I want to give an opportunity to allow my colleagues first to clarify any mistakes that I may have made or just anything that I may have omitted in this discussion so far.
I'm good. That was great.
Okay. And I've, I've covered this piece, and then I'm going to shift to board when we get to our last question. So this again was that curve I really wanted to show you. I think it tells the best story of the pandemic at a glance. The other one that I didn't show you that was on the same page was the hospitalization rate. That also tells a great story for our community. And at the time, you know, some of our most challenging times here is when our hospitalization rate was very high as well. So this is a great way to see the, the whole surge, those surge effects, that you can kind of see all those little mountains in there. Those are moments where you experience a surge, a seasonal surge that is typical of respiratory-borne illnesses. So, so here's where the rubber meets the road. What do we do with this data and where does that take us? Well, when we are in these different transmission levels, we have a tiered mitigation. And this is not unlike what some of the other districts are doing. That means when we are in a high level of transmission, we have a more robust effort to prevent and limit the transmission. And as you move down, then those things become less, they may not be required, they are maybe recommended. So when you're in a low transmission, for example, on this, we, we're using the specific mitigation effort we're talking about today is masks. We know masks have been a, quite a, there's been a lot of discussion around masks. And, and from the medical expert panel, their, their reason for really pushing masks is that they certainly, based on their advisement, do have an impact in respiratory illnesses. That's just a natural thing. And they're very cheap comparatively. So from a mitigation effort to contain the respiratory illnesses, masks become a very high-value strategy to implement. So we focus on that one first though, because it has been very controversial. And we recognize that it does impede the teaching process in some way. In fact, students with disabilities, Jessica, would you mind kind of elaborating a little bit more on how, some of our special populations, how the masks can have that, that difficult impact?
Certainly. So when we're looking at special populations, and that could be any disability area, students who have sensory needs, students who might be deaf or hard of hearing, that can be impacted by the wearing of a mask. So during those educational times, that can certainly provide challenges for teachers in those setting. Some additional areas would be students who might be other health impaired, who have anxiety. So it can impact all students, but specifically students with disabilities in a number of ways.
Ms. Still, do you have anything to add on that particular piece? Okay. So the, where we are currently is in that substantial area. And so I'll kind of draw your attention to that specific mitigation, because this was one of the pieces that is a balancing act, again, of that educational benefit, the science recommendations, that while we've acknowledged the benefit that masks do based on that medical science, the CDC has put out some guidelines that within three feet, universal masking is an effective mitigation strategy. And so we know that some distancing in our schools, we appreciate distancing wherever it can be accommodated. However, it can't always. Some of our classrooms are pretty crowded, and that happens. And so what we have put in place is essentially a required masking policy, only when you are within three feet. So in that close proximity where you really cannot avoid during substantial transmission, that mask is required. And of course, there are opt-outs that have always been available. There's disability-related. Then again, according to our state policy, there is that parent opt-out provision that is not, not necessarily in all states, but that is a, it is a policy, an opt-out policy in Florida that is available. So this allows for really a balancing act. And what I would argue is, is there is some common sense to this as well. That is staff, we have adults who have excellent judgment. And so when they can achieve some level of distancing, you know, that is, is less of a need. But when they are in close quarters and close proximity, such as this right now, where we are in this close environment together, it is a requirement still. Now, as that transmission level moves down to the moderate level, you know, then all of a sudden, it goes down to recommended. So we recommend it because of the medical community. We'll continue to recommend masks. That is just their recommendation. And that's really the overwhelming recommendation that's made, is that masks make a difference. And so, you know, you've had some countries where respiratory-borne illnesses in very close quarters, folks have been wearing masks for, for a very long time. And we have certain professions where they wear masks as a matter of their work every day. So it's not an uncommon thing, but as an entire community, it clearly has its issues. And so this really shows our approach to the mask piece as just one example of the mitigation strategies. What Ms. Stillwell alluded to earlier was, we actually have, all of our mitigation strategies have now been evaluated against this community transmission data-driven context. So we spent a lot of time talking about the mask piece because we know that's of primary concern, wanted to have that transparently. Here's the data that it's based on. People are free to, to review the CDC website as well to, to go through any of those pieces. Ms. Still, I know you wanted to mention something else on this one?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say that this is the beginning, obviously, of what our matrix will look like when everything is done. So you'll not only see face coverings on here, but all of the other mitigation strategies will be ranked. And what I meant a little bit earlier about the timeline, if it was confusing, is, is that we need to get with them to figure out when, like, so, so we're in substantial now. Let's say we have, you know, three or four days of high. How many days are we going to sit in high before we decide to implement our higher-tier strategies? Let's say we get to moderate, which would be amazing. How many days do we want to sit in moderate in order to show a pattern before we can then drop our mitigation strategies down? So that's the discussion that we're going to have tomorrow, and that'll be very clear when, when we release this as to what that timeline will be. The other thing that I wanted to share is, is something about how will people know? So I already started implementing in the COVID update, which goes out to all district personnel every Friday night. We have started including the community transmission level in that COVID update so that our employees can immediately just click on that and they could see, oh, we're in substantial this week, or, oh, we're in moderate this week. And then once we get the matrix done, we'll go ahead and we'll link back to the matrix so that they would be able to easily access that. And then we are working on ways for our outward-facing website for the public to revamp a little bit of our COVID page on there so that it would be easily seen also by members of our public to know exactly what level we're on and which transmission level we are in at that moment. So that's just the beginning, and then we'll, we'll kind of build from there.
One thing I omitted that I think is pretty significant is that these, these surges, as you see, are seasonal. So we can fully anticipate that we may have more surges. Certainly, we all hope that the, the COVID does not continue to mutate and that it certainly, Delta is one example of a mutation that made it more transmissible. For us, you know, we don't want to see them become more virulent. We certainly don't want them to become more transmissible. But what you can count on is that just along the, the respiratory flu seasons, as those are seasonal patterned as well, you may very well see more surges again. So as those rates climb, this gives us a mechanism that shows it's not arbitrary. It's absolutely based on, on the data of the moment, and the strategy is being evaluated by that specific panel and those recommendations brought forward. But again, the balancing act to that, as we talk about balancing this need, is the educational impact. This is very important because we certainly want to make sure that our students and their ability to attend school in person and receive high-quality learning, that we do not disrupt that whenever possible. And so the educational impact is something we, as the educational experts, really have to constantly evaluate. And that will always be a major portion of this. At this time, we're ready to take any questions from the board members on this, this development here.
Board members, Ms. Patrica?
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for having an in-depth conversation with me. I assume you did with the other board members as well before you made any decisions to change any of the protocols that we had in place. I would look forward to, in the future, having something similar to what's on slide seven for all of our mitigation measures. So not just masking, but grab-and-go lunches and, you know, desks facing forward in classrooms and all of that.
So yeah, as I mentioned, this will be built upon. So every mitigation strategy that we've discussed will be then added to this sheet, so it will be very clear. So, you know, stuff that honestly, that the task force said isn't even worth doing in low transmission, we won't have it on any strategy. But then the ones, as we ramp up, like visitors, volunteers, and all that, they'll be listed under each one of these community transmission levels.
Good. I think it would be super helpful for our staff and students and their parents and us to know, okay, we're at this level, that means we're implementing all of this, and we can respond to the public as they come to us. So I appreciate this. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to, I'll get back to it in a second. Bottom line question to all of this is, as far as like the teachers who are very concerned about when they can have an opt-out. So what is your, you know, quick answer to them? I, I know we're looking at the high and the substantial and all that. Where do we need to be? And how close do you think we are to that, to be able to say to the teachers that they can make a choice to opt out from wearing the mask?
Yeah. So basically, they can, if, only in the high level of transmission are they required indoors at all times. And that's really the only time they are required. And that's really during, to capture that surge-level effect. Anytime below that, it becomes varying degrees of option. So like, for example, in the substantial level where we are right now, you don't have to wear it as long as you are beyond three feet. And so teachers can plan accordingly. They aren't in there, they don't have to. Now, they can still choose to wear it if they would choose, and many do. But for those who don't feel comfortable and want to have it, they simply are greater than three feet, they do not have to wear it. So it then becomes optional at that point. Certainly recommended as a mitigation effort, but within three feet, it's no longer recommendation. Moving down to the moderate level, where we have many in Florida, and hopefully we'll be there soon, that's our hope, then they are really just recommended at all times, even within the three feet. And then it's only at the lowest level where they're just optional altogether. And again, folks who want to continue wearing them certainly can, but for everyone else, they're simply optional. So that is designed as a gradient. So it's kind of up there, and this is how all the mitigation measures are set up. You'll see it, all of the other ones will correspond to the same data thresholds.
Okay. And to, to break it down to the lowest level, are teachers aware that we are in substantial? I mean, is it like, you know, on the, on the shore and you see the flag, if it's red or yellow, you know what to do? How are we communicating this to teachers to say, we're in this level, you have an option to opt out? Because I don't think they know. I think they feel that they still are, you know, required at this point. They are not aware that there is a, an option. And, and I'm asking, is there?
So essentially, only the face coverings that right now currently is substantial are required within, when, within three feet. When they're not within three feet, they are not. They are recommended. However, that said, is it clear to people? I think that is something that we continue to discuss because, you know, kind of what I equate it to is like when you go to the, the threat levels in the airport, and you have the color, and it's like, it's orange. Well, what does that mean? I, I don't know what that means. I think that's kind of the, the piece of this information today, and then we'll continue to try to make that clearer. If any of my colleagues want to share part of this communication.
That's what I was asking about, a simplistic way that if I walk in my classroom in the morning and somewhere when I log in, I've got an orange or a red or a, a yellow, so I, and I've got my mask, I know which level I need to be at. Just something simple like that.
Yeah. And that's, that's what I was talking about a little earlier that we were looking into. And then, like I said, every Friday, when we send out the COVID update, the level is in there. And then to kick it off, we actually sent out a letter to all district employees from the superintendent that had this chart in it. So we're just kind of building upon, as we add more of our mitigation strategies, building upon that communication and the ease of being able to find where we are and, and, and what they need to be doing at the time.
And, and I, I bring it up because I know many teachers are very, very fatigued over all that they have to do, plus wearing the mask all day. And I think the sooner we can make it clear to them the options that they have or do not have would be good. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Jovanelli?
Thank you so much. For this, um, so how are we getting, making sure that the principals get the information out? Because I've had, I believe it was a kindergarten, a couple kindergarten or maybe first-grade teachers come to me and tell me that their principal is requiring them still to continue wearing masks. And they're like, well, because we're really, you know, with kindergartners and these youngsters, we're closer than three, you know, feet. So, but, so they're just wearing them, then the principal's kind of making them wear them the whole time. So how do we make sure they have that, you know, it's that, that option to take it off when they're, I guess, not three feet? I mean.
So, and I'm hearing these questions, and we can definitely bring this back to the pandemic team. I'm thinking of some things that we could potentially do in schools that we could discuss in the team, like putting the mitigation updates near the sign-in, where staff sign in so that they can have that every day, and they're not just depending on email. So there's definitely some things that we as a team can discuss. We can also continue to share out with principals that even though we do have, like, we're talking about teachers who want to have some opportunity to have their mask off, they can structure their lessons. These conversations and these televised board briefings are other ways that we share that information. When they are within three feet, they do wear the mask. But they, as teachers, have that opportunity to structure their lessons accordingly if they need some time without their mask during the day because of our current transmission level. But again, we do also have staff who would continue to wear their masks all the time and want to. We have a number of staff on that side. So this affords them the opportunity to continue doing that. It doesn't change anything for them. And we continue to ask our schools to offer opportunities for large group meetings, for there to be Zoom opportunities for those individuals. But we'll bring this back to pandemic and talk about some ways to continue to share this information with staff in some different ways outside of email, so that's clearly communicated with them through their principals, but also through some other means.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Ms. Fisher?
So, so I think in my mind, the remaining question is, is the communication piece. So we're sending out the update every week on Friday, and, and how else are we actually communicating? You know, I mean, is this a topic for morning announcement? Is this something that each teacher is seeing and has access to so that they can make those decisions as educated adults when they're moving themselves around? Because oftentimes, they're not within three feet of students. So I, I just, I think that, from what I heard from my colleagues, that the remaining question is, how are we communicating and getting it right down into the trenches where our teachers and support staff and students are?
Well, and I can say, we haven't done any of that yet because we don't have the final matrix. So once we have the final matrix and everything is built out with all of the mitigation strategies, then there'll be a full-on blitz to share that. But in the meantime, with this stuff, we have sent text messages home, phone calls home, emails home through our school messenger account to get this information out there. We'll be using Peachjar, we'll be using our website. So there's, there is a lot more that we can do, but we're just waiting until we get the full matrix in there, because to just keep sending it without the full matrix, they're gonna, they're gonna start ignoring the, you know, ignoring the communication because we're not providing anything new. So that'll be the next big round of, of what it is that we're looking to do. And we'll probably do news releases and media blitzes and all that good stuff too, because this will be a big, it'll be a big thing when it's done.
And we're very close with a lot of the other pieces as well. It was a lot of different strategies to go through, and the team did an excellent job kind of organizing that information, those recommendations. The other thing I just want to state is that sometimes folks will continue, like, I, I have students in school right now, and there have been folks through the entirety of the students in school right now, and there have been folks, through the entirety of the pandemic, are wearing masks outside. I, every, I'm going in there, parent pickup, and here they are, wearing the masks outside, when we have not required the masks outside in that piece, and yet they're doing it anyway. So, that's just an example of, I think this impacts people in so many different ways. Some folks are just afraid, and they just really feel like it makes them feel better to have that piece, and that's why, in our case, they're always optional, as just one example. But I think what we do want is that consistency, that at least in schools, we don't have people being required to do things. So, if you, as a board, ever are hearing of requirements that are counter to what the policies are, you know, please direct them through our office to work with them. The other thing I just want to highlight that is just an opportunity with the pandemic team, that both Jessica and Lauren have worked on, is that our principals and school leaders, they submit questions all the time, in a live, that literally every time the team meets, what are those questions, and gaps within the process that maybe they don't know? Those get answered by that pandemic team on a very, very frequent basis. So, that's just another mechanism of that real-time, on-demand, providing direction to the schools on that as well.
Just really brief. All right, go ahead.
I understand, and I thank you for all the hard work that pandemic team is doing, and all of that. I, I think we have to keep in mind the gravity of the job for our staff that's in the schools right now, and the urgency of being able to give them back some piece of normalcy, some piece of control. They feel that everything is being told, you do this, you can't do this. So, we need to, as quickly as possible, be able to give them some options, to allow them some feeling that they are in control of their lives as employees.
Really appreciate that, Ms. Gittens. That really is a heavy weight, a burden for all of us. I think we recognize that teachers, especially the ones on their feet all day, you know, planning with kids, that's really what this matrix is in an attempt to do, is to ensure that it's not just arbitrary, we're not doing it due to fatigue, but doing it on the basis of the transmission levels in the community. At the end of the day, saving lives is really important to all of us, and I think that it's not necessarily the children that are most impacted, it could be the loved ones at home, it could be the staff person's loved ones. This is just one of those pieces, just one example among many others. So, what we've done to build in here is, really, in that moderate and low, and really even in the substantial, we're restoring that opportunity for professional dignity, because it's really only when we're in the high level of community transmission that folks are required to do that at all times. You know, and even when I say "all," there are separations to that, if they are, you know, in the bathroom, or they're kind of separate, they're not with children, they're not within that, they still can take the masks off, as they have always been able to do. But during those periods of the high transmission, that's really when it is, among others, a requirement. Other than that, it really is not required at all times. So, there is a lot of flexibility there, built in during non-peak times.
And the medical educational panel has taken that into consideration. I mean, they've really looked at the educational impacts on stuff. One of the things I think that surprised us, but was really, 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 we were really happy with, is that they said, look, if you have volunteers that come into the classroom, that help your teachers, that read to kids, and all that, you shouldn't be limiting them at any level of transmission. Let them come in during the high transmission, follow some of your other protocols, you know, like, you know, doing a whole screening and all of that, but don't ban them from coming in at high transmission. So, they are really taking a look at what teachers and what educators need, and helping us come up with that, in a way to be the most safe, but also in the way to benefit our kids the best way that we can.
Okay, and, and thank you for clarifying some things. I just have two, two comments. Number one, one of the issues brought up here is, and it's not just the teachers, it's all staff, how they get their information. And to me, we do have a step system, and to me, the district chiefs, the district, the superintendent sends out that information, not only to the schools, but the executive directors and chiefs. And, and to me, at that level, it needs to be, you know, if there's somebody, I don't know, in maintenance, let's say, and they're working closely together, doing a project inside, it would be up to that director, or their direct supervisor, to say, you need to be, you know, you're out of compliance on this. So, so I think to say, well, here in the district, the superintendent, I mean, I've seen how many things have been sent out, and teachers and other staff members can access that, but frankly, teachers have so much, and so many other emails, that it might just get lost. But, as some people said, maybe it, where you sign in, and everybody signs in, no matter if you're a teacher, a paraprofessional, working in transportation, or wherever, there can be...
Orange.
...card. This means blah, 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 done. Okay, on that. The second thing is, when you, going into some of the retail establishments and other services in the area, there's the sign, fully vaccinated customers, patrons are welcome to come in without the mask. What I'm curious about, and I understand the restrictions of HIPAA laws and all, but I'm wondering if any staff members who are fully vaccinated have been saying, have been requesting, and whether that is something the pandemic team has, has spoken about, that if a staff member chooses to reveal and prove his or her vaccination status in lieu of wearing a mask, if that would be considered? Has it been discussed?
So, my understanding is it has been discussed, and I haven't been to all of them, but they can, the big understanding that I had is, we had a number of staff who were vaccinated. The issue, I think, becomes that the masks, oftentimes, unless they're the highest-grade masks that we offer, they provide more protection, not necessarily to the individual wearing the mask, but to others.
Right.
And so, my understanding is that because folks who've been vaccinated can still be carriers, again, I have not been in those, so that'll be corrected by my colleagues here, if I'm speaking erra, that that's why that piece isn't done. Now, again, establishments are totally discretionary, we're in public education, folks have compulsory attendance, we want them in school, we've experienced learning loss. This is a balancing act of trying to keep everyone as safe as possible, while still having dignity, and all those other factors as well. But that, I, I'm pretty confident that has been discussed, but I believe the recommendation was because of the carriers. Is that correct? Yep.
Okay, so because of carriers, that would not be an option.
But we should highly encourage the vaccination via the recommendations, because that does reduce the risk of hospitalization. That if there is one thing that I've heard repeatedly, it's vaccinations prevent deaths. At the end of the day, that's why it's so important to encourage that piece, and again, folks have different beliefs about that issue, but that's the recommendation we've been given, is encourage vaccination any way we can, because it prevents deaths and the most serious hospitalizations. It doesn't prevent it completely, but it diminishes the risk substantially.
Right, substantially, and I was just wondering about that. All right, one more comment, and then I think we'll take a short break. We have a lot more on our agenda. Go ahead, Ms. Patrica. A little off-topic, but thank you for making N95s available to bus drivers. Appreciate that. Yeah, and I, I second that, you know why. Okay. All right, so we thank you for that. We're gonna take a five-minute recess, and if the presenters who are going to be presenting on the Cape Coral Response would get set up, please, during that time, so we can jump right in to that in five minutes. We have had a brief recess, and we are, if I could have everybody take their seats, please. Thank you. We've had a brief recess, and we are ready to continue with our briefing of November 2nd. And ready to go are, is the next team, and this is, let me backtrack on the exact, it's the Cape Coral Response is the subject, and we have Dr. Denise Carlin, who is Chief of Staff, we have Dr. Amy Decimores, who is Chief Financial Officers, and we have Ms. Kelly Letcher, who is the Director of Budget. Thank you. Is that a little, can you hear her? Can't hear you.
Make sure you press the red button. Okay.
Doesn't...
Nope.
Testing?
Yep.
Oh, there we go. All right.
Great.
Take two. Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Savage and Attorney DePree Bruno, thank you for allowing us to be here with you today to provide you with some information, as you provide direction on whether or not to share a portion of the half-penny sales surtax proceeds with the City of Cape Coral Charter Schools. As you may recall, City of Cape Coral Mayor Gunter sent a letter to Board Chair Jordan requesting that the school board share a portion of the proceeds to assist the Cape Coral Charter Schools in meeting their unmet capital needs. The City of Cape Coral Council also passed a resolution requesting the same. So, with this, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Decimores and Ms. Letcher, who will review some information regarding the sales surtax referendum, as well as important budgetary information for your consideration as part of today's discussion.
All right. And good afternoon, Dr. Savage, members of the board. Can you all hear me okay? All right, so, so thank you. Denise laid out the background behind why we're here today. In your packet, we included the original resolution from the board regarding the sales tax that was voted on at the time. It outlined various things, including project lists, and I just wanted to point out, in that resolution, we did not say specifically that we would, that we would include charter schools inside of that referendum. At the time, the different...
Can you repeat that last thing you said, please?
Yes. I said, I did want to say that in the resolution, it does not say specifically that we would include charters within that resol, within that sales tax initiative. With the conversations at the time, the reasons why we did not include them at that point were a few. And also, in your packet, you have the, kind of, some bullet points related to that, at the, the page at the top says charter schools, information on funds for capital and from the district. So, there's various bullet points in there with some points, and I'll just highlight a few of them today for us. One of the reasons at the time that we did not include was that many of the charter schools don't own their own buildings, and the state provides PICO to charters, or has been providing PICO dollars, which is another form of capital dollars, to charter schools, but not traditional schools, since 2019. And some of the bullet points that you have, the state provides them those PICO dollars... And some of the bullet points that you have, the state provides them those PICO dollars to charter schools. Between the years 2015 to 2018, the charter schools received capital funds specifically ranging from $182 per student to $343 per student. Traditional schools in that same time period received capital funds ranging from $16 to $20 per student in that same funding source. So there was a wide gap in terms of what district traditional schools were receiving versus all charter schools. In addition now, in 2018, there was a law that was passed mandating school districts to share their 2 mil dollars or 1.5 property tax capital dollars with charter schools in cases where the PICO was not given to them at higher rates than traditional schools. So we did have to do that one time in 2018. We provided about $480 per student funding to charter schools from that capital outlay funding or from our capital property tax funding based on that new statute. So we did that in that year. Another point to note related to requirements on capital and how that affects schools fiscally is that charter schools are not required to meet the stringent S-REF requirements that traditional schools are required to meet. And just a note on growth, the school district is growing at a rate of approximately 1,400 students a year over the last six years. Okay, now that's including FY '21 because we know we had a blip due to COVID. And in that same time period, charter school population has been declining, overall charter school population. So as we had that conversation at the time, those were some of the things that we considered in terms of determining how that sales tax funding would be structured. So I just wanted to give a little background and some points to note related to some of the consideration that went into that decision at the time. I'll now turn it over to Ms. Letcher, who will go through some additional information regarding funding for charter schools as it relates to capital, and then we'll come back to an overall sales tax discussion.
So good evening. As you know, as Amy stated, in 2018, the legislative session said that we had to share our capital outlay millage. The following year, they came back and said, well, in the years that the legislative session provides additional PICO dollars to charter schools, that the school districts do not have to share their capital millage dollars. When that happened, the PICO rate went way up for charter schools. Before that time period, the City of Cape Coral Charter Schools were getting about 600 and something thousand dollars. And this year, they're projected to get about 1.8 million dollars in PICO dollars. It's been over a million and a half every year since the legislator made that for the City of Cape Coral Charter Schools alone. We have worked as collaboratively as we could with the charter schools and some other areas as well. As you know, with charter schools, school districts can keep an additional administrative rate back on the funds that we provide to them through the FFP of up to 250 students per school. We have only charged the City of Cape Coral 250 students in total. So we could get an administrative fee from them of up to 1,000 students, and we only do it for 250 students, which has put about $229,000 into their pot every year. We have, if the decision is made to share, we don't know how we would just share with the City of Cape Coral, because we have 22 charter schools that qualify for capital outlay funding through the state. So 22 of our 23 qualify for charter school capital outlay, and we don't know how we would define the difference between the City of Cape Coral and those charters and not share with all.
So lastly, the last piece of information or handout that you have in your packet is that sales tax budget outlook, it says at the top. And that is the picture, the sales tax plan basically over the next five years. So you see how that lays out. And of course, there's a few years after this five-year plan in which we will still be receiving sales tax funds, but we just show you these five years. And just noting that changes to this could result in additional need, unmet need for our traditional schools based on how our plan is rolled out here. So we wanted to give you this information so that you have some of the pieces of information that you would need in terms of the history and then where we are right now in our plan to help facilitate your discussion on the request that you received from the City of Cape Coral Charter Schools. So at this point, we turn it back over to you for any discussion and any questions of us you may have.
Okay. So, Ms. Fisher? Yes. So ladies, is there any other way that we do share with the City of Cape Coral Charter Schools as well as our other schools in offering professional?
All right. Wait, hold on. I'm hearing that some people can't hear you. Is your mic on?
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, is that better?
Lean in.
Sounds like fun.
Talk a little louder.
Okay. So I was wondering if there are any other ways that we are sharing with local charter schools, like with professional development and other activities like that? Are we providing that to our charter schools?
Oh, yes, there are various ways in which that happens. We have our, not sure if she's, yeah, she is here, our Director of Charter Schools, who may want to come up and give some additional background behind that. But I know we have various ventures, including some of our trainings and some of our information sessions that we invite charters to. They come and meet with us periodically to get information. And I think Ms. Kennedy might be able to give us some additional information about what else we may provide and how deep that goes.
Well, all of our grant opportunities are provided with the charter schools, as well as the staff development. And we have this year really worked to communicate and collaborate. So we have an additional coordinator in the charter schools now that is actually going out to the schools and providing additional support as well. And we have invited all of our charter school administrators to join in all of our meetings this year.
Thank you. And then my other question is, was there an opportunity at the time that we were out for the sales tax, was there an opportunity for charters to join with us?
Yes, to my knowledge, there was. To my knowledge, there was some conversation that our superintendent at the time had with officials in various places, including with the City of Cape. And to my knowledge, you know, none of them chose to take us up on, joining with us on a recruitment or a marketing effort at the time. And that is to my knowledge.
Thank you. Mrs. Patrica?
So I want to start. I want to start by saying, I love our Cape Coral Charter Schools. I think they are phenomenal. I particularly have support and respect for municipal charter schools because it's not taxpayer dollars going to private corporations. And I, you know, I really think they do a fantastic job. The service that they provide to their students and their families in that community is outstanding. So I don't want my comments to be confused with not supporting them because I think they're great. Ms. Fisher, in answer, if I may through the chair, in answer to your question, yes, we did approach the City of Cape Coral, both as individual people, individual elected officials, individual community leaders. And we went through the financial analysis of the disproportionate amount of capital dollars they had received from the state from various sources to include PICO dollars. And they looked at it at the time and said, you know what, it's probably not fair for us to ask for any more at this point because we're already getting on a per-student basis more than what traditional public schools are getting. I mean, the proposal was, you know, the charter schools in Cape Coral are beloved. And if they got behind that half penny sales tax effort, it would have been a huge political force behind the half penny sales tax. And that's one thing. I'm concerned about the lack of sort of equity in terms of Cape Coral Charter students receiving more capital dollars than what traditional public school students would receive. I've got a lot of different questions here. Dr. Carlin, you and I discussed a change in the law, so I think this question might be more for you. Attorney DePree Bruno, there was a change in the law recently, within the past couple years, that required districts that had passed a discretionary tax to share that tax with charter schools. To my understanding, that's the 1.0 mil operating. It is not the half penny maintenance. Is that correct?
So let me take a little.
Half penny capital, I should say. And you don't have to answer that right now. You can get back to us if you don't know that off the top of your head. Oh, collaboration, economies of scale. So is there, I know that we're pursuing opportunities to collaborate with Cape Coral Charter Schools. I'm wondering whether they could take advantage of the economies of scale we have by having so many schools. I would assume it's cheaper for us to maintain buildings than it is for them to maintain buildings because we have so many of them and we have so much staff. Have they thought about outsourcing maintenance to the school district of Lee County and paying us for that maintenance? I don't even know if that's something that we could think about or that we could get into with them, but finding a way to help them would be really important. And really, the bottom line for me is, I did hundreds, right? Did I do hundreds of presentations on the half penny sales tax?
Yes, ma'am.
Sometimes did five a day. And almost, almost every one of those presentations, somebody asked me, will this money be shared with charter schools? And every single time, I said no. And we made promises to the taxpayers when we went out and we passed that referendum. We promised them, and we have kept that promise, and it's been proven that we've kept that promise with the oversight by the Half Penny Sales Tax Oversight Committee. I just, I don't know how we break that promise to the taxpayers. Because no, this money is not going to be shared with charters, was the answer I provided over and over and over and over again. And it would feel like I was lying to them if we did this now. And the last thing I'll say is just sort of like on a personal level, I'm surprised that we're not having conversations with people in Cape Coral. You know, like I'm surprised that this came to us in the form of a letter to our chair instead of picking up the phone and calling and saying, hey, this is what we got going on at our Cape Coral Charter Schools. Can we find a way to work this out? It's kind of playing out in the papers, and that's disappointing to me because I do think we are going to find a solution that's going to help our students. They are our students, right? Cape Coral Charter School students are our students. That we're going to find a way to help them. I'm just, I'm not supportive of sharing of half penny sales tax, given everything I just said. Am I making sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Looks like Ms. Fisher has a response. May I respond to Ms. Patrica? Yes, you may. Through you. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Patrica, yes, I did have phone calls from people in the City of Cape Coral and have talked with Councilmember Tate. Oh, up to this point, you mean? Yes. Yes. Yes, so they did approach us personally also. Thank you. Other comments? Mrs. Jivinelli?
Okay, so my only concern, or one of my concerns is, I mean, this letter from Cape Coral was in July, and we're now in the month of November. And so that's a little alarming that we've sat on this for so long and not addressed it pretty, fairly quickly. I know there's some regarding the legislature, things that's changed and that thing, that sort of thing. But I think that we need to be a little more, you know, we need to respond quicker than what we did. I too had had conversations with a council member in the Cape that contacted me. So they have reached out, and I had been waiting on this day. So, and when I responded to her, you know, I told her that we were looking into it, you know, and again, that was in July. So when she spoke to me about it. So I mean, we do need to address this sooner than later. And so I'm hoping we can come to some kind of agreement of some sort today. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Gittens?
I have a question. One of you mentioned about the administrative fees, I think, Charlie, you did about that we only charge for 250 of how many students? And you did say it equaled to an amount of, and it was 200 something. I didn't get that to be precise.
229,000 this year is the amount, and I do have that, and I'm looking at it. They have over 3,000 students in the City of Cape Coral Charter Schools, about 3,200 as of our last survey.
And we're only charging for 250?
250 of them, yes.
Okay. And that administration fee, okay. So I have heard Attorney Bruno say, and different ones say at times, the specificity of the half cent sales tax is very, very clear. You can do this, you cannot do this, you can do this, you cannot do that. And at one point, I recall someone saying, we can't make any changes in what the original was. Am I correct with that? So in other words, changing something now, would that be, and that may be a legal question, does that constitute a change to what we were doing originally?
So the resolution that was passed by the Board was very, very specific. And he had the Exhibit A and said exactly what the money was going to be used for. And that is what was presented to the public in the referendum.
Right. I remember a conversation about that, that if we wanted to change anything, it would have to go back to a referendum to the public. Because we had said we will do A, B, and C. We can't add D just because, for whatever reason. Is, am I correct with that?
Well, the resolution and what is required by the statute is that you have a very specific project list. And when you're looking at our project list, it talks about elementary school in the East Zone. It talks about Cypress Lake Middle remodel. It's very, very specific in terms of the projects that we presented to the public, what we were going to use the money for.
And was the Cape Coral, you know, municipal charter in there?
No.
Okay. And no offense to anyone from the Cape Coral Charter, I'm just trying to look at our legal responsibility to the community that if it passed based on A, B, and C, I don't know how legally we can add D. And that's my question to either the attorney or to the accountants or whatever.
Okay. Ms. Morgan, did you have anything?
Can someone answer my question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What is the question, Mrs. Gittens?
I said, so basically, we said to the public, if you pass this, we will do A, B, and C. And making a change to the disbursement of this money would be adding another item. Am I correct? That would have to go back for public approval.
Oh, it's not necessarily go back for public approval. When you passed your resolution, you had very specific projects on there.
Right.
So that is what the public voted on.
Right. And I'm saying, if this was not on there.
Correct.
Then we don't have a legal ability. Okay. All right. Thank you.
You said, no, anybody else? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Fisher. So first, I am also disappointed in the response time to the original letter back in July. And my question to you, Attorney Bruno, is that with the specific resolution, as time goes on and as we are keeping our public informed about projects that are being completed and money's expended, does that resolution stand firm or is there opportunity for adjustment in that?
Well, at this point, that resolution stands firm because that is what the public voted on.
And that would be for the 10-year period?
That's for the 10-year period.
Okay. I appreciate that. You know, our Cape Coral Charter Schools do an amazing job with our students, you know, and they're all our kids. So I think that anything that we can do to support their success is important, but I do want. I do understand the legal ramifications of the vote.
And I think, just to add as well, if the board were to decide to do anything different, you're opening yourselves as well to sharing these revenues with the rest of the charter schools. You can't pick just the municipality.
And, yes, and I think I've had that explained to me, and I do understand that because the Cape Coral charters are our most stable and successful charters. So, I understand that also.
Okay.
And I think we need to take into consideration some of the conversations we've had from construction and maintenance about the cost of materials and the fact that many of our schools, you know, the original estimates put into the new construction and into maintenance are now considerably lower than what the marketplace says. And we, in fact, may not be able to complete everything that we promised the public we were going to do when we passed that referendum.
Other comments, questions?
And I think I will just add again to what Ms. Fisher was asking and Ms. Gittens was asking. The language from the ballot was very clear. It specifically says to fund the acquisition, construction, renovation, equipping, and financing of public school facilities and technology.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Patrica.
Just to provide a little clarity on that, you guys, sorry, all of you stated earlier that, and I know that Cape Coral Charter Schools are not public school facilities. If we were to take them over at some point, it would require significant renovations. It's not like we could just put traditional public school students in them. They are not public school facilities in accordance with ESREF, is it? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And to that, I would add that quite a while ago, when I spoke with previous city council members, let's say maybe seven or eight years ago, I suggested that their buildings be folded into our inventory and that we would maintain them on that basis. But the problem, frankly, is that we don't need the seats. So, we really can't be in the position of, you know, providing, you know, taxpayer investments in seats that we don't need and probably can't use, so.
Okay. Anything else that you want, any other comments, questions? What else would you like to add that hasn't been covered?
I don't believe we have anything else to add at this time, but we do await board direction on where to go from here.
Okay, so, Mrs. DePree Bruno, what...
So, I think...
Say that would be appropriate at this time. I believe we do have speakers that are going to speak on this as well.
So, I think the board would want to do a formal response and probably through the chair, since the chair is the one that receives the correspondence, and just indicate to the chair by roll call consensus or something of that nature which direction you want the board to go in terms of the response.
Okay. Now, are you saying as a consensus directing the chair? Are you saying at an action, an action meeting?
We can do the consensus to draft the correspondence, and then it can come to the board for an action vote.
Okay, so, where would, Mrs. Patrica?
Shall we wait to take consensus until after we hear public comment?
Well, and see, that's what I was hesitating about, that I think it's fitting and appropriate that we hear the public comment first. So, can we put that at the end of our meeting after we hear?
Yes, if the board agrees to do so.
All right, so let's, we're going to wait until we've heard the public comment since we have people who have come to speak on this, and we will wait to give our direction until after that point, but we will do it at this meeting. So, thank you so much, ladies.
Thank you.
And I think that we have, at least Dr. Desamores is sticking around for the next presentation, and we're adding Ms. Susan Millay, who is Executive Director of Business Services. And this is Small Business and Proposed Policy 6.072. Awesome, all right.
Ms. Vaughn, so I've been alerted to a little bit of a concern. We do have some public officials who are here today that actually have to go to their own public meeting.
Oh, okay.
And so, this is one of the reasons that I'm making these recommendations to our board meeting and public comment policy so that we can have some flexibility to be able to accommodate. But I would request, you can't vote on it, but I would request that we allow these dignitaries to come in.
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy to do that. I was unaware that there was a time crunch, and so, you know, really, this might have been helpful to have it earlier, this particular topic, earlier in the meeting, but I don't set the agenda. So, let's then move ahead with only those people that are the, you said, they're elected officials, they're council people?
I believe there's three. I believe the mayor is here, and I believe there's two other individuals.
Okay, and is there anybody else who fits into that, I'm going to call it category, who has not filled out a blue card? So, we're...are you elected member of the council?
Excuse me?
I couldn't hear you.
Ms. Jenner.
So, we are extending this privilege to whom? Would you read the names of the people, please, Ms. DePree Bruno?
Do you believe that Mayor Gunter is here?
Yes, Mayor Gunter is here.
And I'm not sure who else...
Councilmember Tate.
Councilmember Tate.
Mr. Mayor, who are the other people that are with you?
Superintendent Collins.
Okay.
Okay, so those three individuals.
All right, so those three. And, all right, well, I've already said that you may speak if you're all together, governing board members and the elected officials. So, we're going to limit it to those people, and then, I'm sorry, ladies, we'll come back to you afterward, and then after your presentation, we will do the general public comment. Okay, so, do we have a problem?
If we're moving on to public comment, then can we include any Cape Coral residents too who may have...
No, we're not.
...in the charter schools?
No.
Madam Chair, can I say that if we're talking about this topic, should we not hear information about this topic at this time instead of splitting it up?
Just a question.
Well, the request that I rece, I'm going along with the request, and the request that I received was that there were a limited number of individuals that had to be, had to leave. And we actually said that we, if you recall, you said that we were going to wait until after public comment. We're just allowing these people to speak early. If you remember, we said that, Ms. Gittens?
Madam Chair, I do, I understand that.
So, we're going to, that's how we're going to do it.
I understand, though, that there were a group of people that came from Cape Coral to speak on this topic, and at this time, I'm just requesting that everyone that has a, what, how long will they have?
You have three minutes.
It's, I would just think we would give them the courtesy of letting this topic be discussed at this time.
Okay, so what we're actually doing is, we've already said that we were going to wait until after public comment, and then after I said that we were going to wait for that, I was notified that there's some people that had to leave, and we're going to stick with that, those people, the other people who don't have a specific meeting and may that...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What?
Can we just move on with public comment? There are several people here from the city of Cape Coral.
We're going with, we're going with the people that are up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, my name is Christopher Jackson, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Oasis Charter School Authority Governing Board. I'd like to thank you for your consideration at today's meeting as it pertains to the opportunity of sharing the half-cent sales tax with the other charter schools. It was stated earlier that it would be difficult to distinguish on what charter schools to share this tax with. Might I suggest that we consider municipal schools that are not-for-profit as a start of, that should be maybe the criteria that you could follow that would limit the amount of charter schools that you would have to share that tax with. That being said, the parents of our students subsidize that tax that is collected but do not benefit from the contributions. As the Oasis Charter School is part of Lee County and aligned and partnered with Lee County School Systems, I feel that the consideration to share in the tax is mutually beneficial to our community and to our students more importantly. Thank you for your considerations.
My name is John Gunter, Mayor of City of Cape Coral. I sent that request to the board back in July 9th, I believe it was, as far as the share of the half-cent sales tax. Several months went by, and I think October 8th, I had sent a subsequent letter because we at the city had not heard anything from the board or from anyone in the district pertaining to this request. And then shortly thereafter, then we did get a response. So, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the board today. As you're well aware, the students in Lee County are highest concern as far as their educational aspects, and I think that's one of the reasons why we asked to share the half-cent sales tax, because we want to make sure that we give each student in the county the same opportunities. I will say that I heard the board mention about the charter schools. I think the difference between the City of Cape Coral Charter Schools is we're a municipal charter school, which the state recognizes as a public school, and we're not a for-profit organization. So, I think we do have some different classification than a typical charter school. Basically, what we're asking is a partnership between the Lee County School District and the City of Cape Coral. I will tell you that I've been on city council since 2017 and speaking with several members of staff that have been at Cape Coral for over 30 years, speaking with them, no one from the school district approached us when we were talking about the half-cent sales tax or even sharing that particular tax. So, when I heard that statement earlier in the conversation, as far as I'm concerned, the City of Cape Coral has not heard from anyone when you were discussing moving forward with your referendum. Now, as far as the referendum's concerned, I'm not asking for anyone to do anything that's not specifically spelled out in the referendum, but because the charter schools are classified as a public school, I think we do have that opportunity where those monies could be shared, and that's what we're asking for today. I think that all of us have the same desire to make sure that we provide the best education, the best facilities to all of our students, and that's why I requested through the city council and the charter schools a sharing of the tax. I understand that we get PICO money first.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board and staff. Thank you for having me today. My name is Gloria Rasso-Tate, and I'm a founding board member of the charter schools. I was on the council in 2005 when the school district wasn't able to build enough schools, and we began our own school system. I'm now District One City Council Member, and I also serve on the Charter School Board Authority. Our charter schools are considered public schools, and as such, they have the same needs as your public schools. Charter school building grounds, technology, and school buses all require regular maintenance, repair, replacement, and upgrades. Currently, about 48 charter school classrooms need carpeting. We need a new air handler in the middle school. We need to purchase more buses. We have a fabulous PTO and a fundraising department. Parents that go out of their way to raise money, we just did a golf tournament with $40,000 that we raised, but these parents are working hard, but they're not receiving any sales tax for which they are paying every day in their tax bills. The charter school students, staff have the same needs, but we aren't receiving the funding. We're here to ask you to share that, and I listen to you, and I understand your minds are pretty well made up, but I'd ask you to reopen them. Sometimes we have to do that as public officials. We have to relook at the item, and I'm asking you to take a second look at this, even though you seem to have your minds made up. The bill was passed in 2020, states that a school board sets a discretionary voter-approved tax, says the sales tax revenue must be shared with charter schools based upon student enrollment. We have over 500 students waiting to get into our charter schools for the coming year. So, our school has not diminished, as I heard somebody state at this time. It is necessary and important for you all to reconsider your actions on this. The timing was terrible. We did write to you in July. I have correspondence from my city attorney to your city attorney over every month saying, "Where is it? Where is the status?" So, the delay has not been with us. Our council, eight members of our council, are 100% behind the school board, and we have funded our charter schools through our budget this year. So, we're asking you to take part in helping us continue to improve our charter schools and offer A-plus education. All four of our charter schools have grade A performance levels, and I know you all can't say that. We're very proud of our schools, and we hope that you'll become a partner with us. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, School Board. Jackie Collins, Superintendent of the Oasis Charter Schools. As you know, charter schools operate on less funding than their traditional school counterparts, but are public schools nonetheless. We have been a high-performing school system for many years, and we contribute to the academic success of the school district. We have a high school with a 99% graduation rate. We have a middle school that's been an A school for the last 12 years. We have an elementary school in the south that is just a part of the U.S. News &amp; World Report Top Performing Elementary Schools in the state of Florida, and we have our other elementary school as a school of excellence. We, at this time, are at full capacity, and we have a waiting list of over 580 students. We are a prominent part of the Cape Coral community. However, there is simply not enough educational funding to meet the needs of our students and our community of families. Our fleet is aging, our buildings are ready for upgrades, our playgrounds need to be repaired, and it is extremely difficult to make these improvements without extra funding. Now, I know we receive a 1.7 million this year or next year in PICO funding, which is wonderful because it's the highest it's ever been. It stayed flat for many years, but when you consider 1.7 million in funding divided by four schools, it's not very much money, considering that the school district can raise taxes by the half-cent sales tax, the discretionary taxes and impact fees to the tune of about $500 million in the course of a year. Charter schools cannot, of course, raise taxes on their own, and if the district would simply share a portion of the half-cent sales tax, we would be able to continue to educate our students at an appropriate level comparable to the district. I want to thank the board because we have had a wonderful working relationship with the school district thus far. Now, we need to continue to work together to support, to strengthen our relationship so that we can work together to support each other now and for the long term. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to share our thoughts on this particular issue. You know, it's funny, when I was doing research years ago about charter schools, the issue came up... charter schools, uh, the issue came up that they were developed to be a, a, a smaller school system where programs could be tested and then as those programs were effective, that could be brought to the larger school district, right? We are one of those smaller systems that's best-in-class with a number of best practices and regardless of how you vote, we hope that this is an opportunity for us to begin a much stronger collaboration. There is a grant that's been made available to five counties in the state of Florida where the public school system would collaborate with the chargers in a much more effective way, right? Best practices, challenges. We made that recommendation to Dr. Atkins when he was here and I think he transferred that over to Dr. Spiro and that was months and months and months ago. We never heard back. So if that funding is still available, that's another opportunity where we would collaborate. We're a best-in-class school system. This funding would go a long way for us to continue that and, uh, we thank you for your kind, kind consideration.
Okay, so those are those speakers and I'm going to remind you that the rest of you who are here to speak on behalf of the Cape Coral Municipal Charters will have that opportunity, um, after this presentation and before we give direction, uh, we give direction as a board. So we'll look forward to hearing from the rest of you during regular public comment. Okay, so.
Hey, okay, thank you. So our next spot today is we are here to update you and talk about the Small Business Enterprise Program. As you remember, this was a conversation that had started out with, uh, Mr. Brian Williams, Mr. James Holloway in partnership with Susan and I and Tracy Adams in procurement, um, to be able to, um, provide a program that expanded, widened the net in terms of who the, the vendors are that we are reaching and be able to diversify our pool of vendors that we work with. Good for the community, good for the district because it strengthens competition and making sure that our, the, the vendors that we work with are really reflective of the diversity we have in the community. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Susan Malley so she can update you all on the progress that we've made since the last time we talked. We actually have a draft port, board policy to be able to discuss. Ms. Malley?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Board members and Dr. Savage. Thank you for having us back again today. Um, going to jump right into a discussion of where we've gone since we've last discussed with you, the Small Business Enterprise, um, policy that we'd like to bring forward for board consideration. Our timeline is that in February, we, uh, the board recommended to proceed with pursuing a Small Business Enterprise policy. Since then, we've engaged with the community, um, after developing our research and bringing forward ideas for the policy and we've presented it, as you had heard from multiple committees earlier today, we've presented this at multiple advisory committees to the board and received their feedback and today we hope to gain your support for moving the policy forward or, um, making any changes to the draft that has been presented. Um, and if that is, if we're, if that is the board's desire, then we could proceed before the end of the calendar year in, um, adopting the policy. The scope of the po, Small Business Enterprise Program, um, as Dr. Desmore indicated, is to increase the share of, um, district contracts with small businesses within the community. The criteria of how we define small will be one of those operational, um, procedures that we need to do as a district team and then as the board, I anticipate, would assign committee members, um, if the policy is adopted and the district would take forward recommendations for implementing the policy at which the committee would participate in, uh, making their recommendations. Some of the things that are important to note are the difference between a Small Business Enterprise Policy and a Minority Business Program. And I think that was clearly outlined to you, um, when Mr. Williams and, and Mr. Holloway made their presentation in February. Just wanted you to know that we shared that information with the community in our presentations so that they would understand the difference also. And importantly, at this time, we are pursuing the Small Business Policy. We will outanalyze our data and then determine if it makes sense to, um, make any changes, for example, to adopt a Minority Business Policy. We've talked about, um, reinvesting our tax dollars and fostering economic growth and creating jobs in the community and, um, importantly, taking our, um, sales tax revenue and sharing that amongst those, uh, vendors in our community, um, so that we can see growth and economic stimulus there. Uh, just a couple of quick, um, reminders of the activities that we have been pursuing over the years to, um, invite small business participation. Our favorite, um, one that I like to tout is our matchmaking program. When we award the very large contracts, such as the construction of schools, we then host events where, um, our small businesses can come in and meet and greet with those awarded vendors so that they can get to know them, understand their bidding process that the, uh, construction managers have, so that we can, um, help bring forward those small businesses to participate with the vendors who were awarded the larger contracts for which they would not qualify. We've, um, significantly been working with FGCU's, uh, Small Business Development Program and, um, excited to move forward with them. And, um, we've also, uh, continued our work in leveraging state and county information on programs and criteria that they already have where they register small vendor, uh, small businesses and certify minority firms. So we anticipate using the established programs of the state and the county, not creating our own criteria for evaluating businesses, but using what's in place, what our standards established. And those are the conversations that we've had with our community. Um, wanted to take a peek at the policy. It's been shared with you. Um, if, uh, would you like me to bring that up or do you have any, um, feedback on that?
Are there, are there questions at this point before we look specifically at the policy? Uh, yes, Ms. Gittens.
Um, good afternoon, uh, ladies and thank you. Ms. Malley, you mentioned something about small business now and looking at the minority business, uh, a minority business po, policy later. It was, am I confused with that or because I thought that this one said on slide five, small business and minority. So are those two different things and we're just working on the first one and later on considering the second one?
Is this the slide that you're referencing, Mrs. Gittens?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, as we went out to the community, what we did was we explained to them the difference between a Small Business Policy and a Minority Business Policy. And so just a quick refresher that, um, we are currently pursuing the Small Business Policy as that does not require a disparity study. So, um, in order to establish a Minority Business Program, we would need to go out and conduct a study as to how many businesses in our community are minority-owned, how many, uh, firms are we engaged with, what's the share of revenue or district dollars with those programs? So in order to adopt a Minority Business Program, we would first have to conduct this, the study. So in February, the board recommended that we jumpstart with a Small Business Program, which does not require that study and would likely engage many of our minority businesses as they are small businesses.
So what is the timeframe, the priority and the cost of doing a disparis, disparity study so that we can move on to the minority and disadvantaged businesses?
So the presentation in February that was presented by Mr. Williams and Mr. Holloway laid out the cost and timeline for doing that and you can only adopt a Minority Business, um, policy, to my understanding, if you prove that you, um, you have the data that demonstrates there are some large, uh, percentage of community, um, minority businesses and the percentage that we are engaging with would be a, uh, a much lower percentage. So, um, that data, I think they gave a two-year timeline, if I recall correctly, and, um, then you can only adopt that if, if there is a proven disconnect. And one of the things I would like to share is, um, since 2012, 15, we have, um, been using the Small Minority Business Registry for the state and the county. And so we pull that data down, we reach out to the vendors who are registered, we notify them of our, um, bid opportunities and it, it's been a minute, but the last time I was involved, um, I believe we used, we had in our PeopleSoft system, which is how we pay vendors, 80% of the county-registered minority businesses were also, um, in our database as being paid vendors with the district indicating that the firms who are registered and certified as minority businesses, the bis, the district is engaging in business with a large percentage of them.
So you're saying that 80% of the minority businesses are already in that Small Business Group?
It, it, it's been a little bit since I had my eyes on the data, but the last time that I personally reviewed it, the, um, the county-registered vendors, 80% of them were also registered and had been paid by the district. It doesn't mean they're paid regularly or annually. It means that they're registered and have received payment from the district. So over a period of time, they had, we had conducted business with them.
Okay. I, I just, uh, my main thing was though that when you made the comment about small business versus the minority, uh, businesses, that we had a priority as well to make sure that the two became the same eventually.
Yes. I, I, I was just going to add, I'm sorry, I think the, the important thing was, um, we had received our advice from legal that we needed to follow a specific set of steps, right? In order to get from, you know, point A to point Z. And so this is the first step in which we're following in order to get ultimately where we want to be.
Okay. And the last thing, you said that you were, you know, out in, in the community. What was your success in contacting people in the community and did you have, you know, forums or luncheons or what? And what was the percentage of participation?
Are you referring to briefing, uh, the presentation on Small Business Enterprise or something else?
Yes, that's what you said. You went out into the community.
Correct.
Yes.
So, um, we presented at one, at three different, um, advisory boards. So I think that you were present at the Finance Advisory Committee when this presentation was made. We also presented at, um, EDAC and at the Construction Advisory Committee. And then they provided, um, information for different, additional outreach, um, uh, individuals that they, um, uh, recommended that we speak with. And I have, uh, reached out to several of those. I haven't heard back from them yet, um, but I do believe that it would be important to engage with them, particularly as we go forward with committee participation. Would love to see, um, you know, generate some excitement around those who would like to participate on the Small Business Enterprise Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think Ms. Petrika and we'll just go right down the row after Mrs. Petrika.
Okay, so if I recall correctly, that disparity study was kind of a big undertaking, requiring significant collaboration with other government entities and, um, this suggestion was made that we reached out to Sarah Owen, right, over at, um, the Community Foundation, right? Um, I'm wondering whether, when Dr. Savage comes back, he could update us in the board update as to where we stand with regard to pursuing that disparity study and, and what does the timeline look like at this point? Because I remember there was a significant amount of excitement at that table and at this table when we talked about that. And I'm glad, obviously, you're, you're on, you're on the timeline here by bringing it back to us now. I would just like to be, um, have my, uh, recollection refreshed as to when we'll be pursuing that disparity study. Uh, if I also recall, it was really expensive. So we were looking for partners to help us, um, assist us in.
Yeah.
Sort of sponsoring that, let's put it that way.
Yes. We would have to, you're, you're right, we would have to, um, you know, engage with a consultant in order to do that. Um, the indications that we received at the time was, uh, you know, they could be, um, in the hundred of thousands of dollars, at least, one. So yes, it would be, um, you know, an expensive endeavor. And also, I believe at the time, the point, uh, the, one of the first steps that we had to have a board policy in place or needed to have a board policy in place first and then move on to the next steps. So I think until we get to that point, um, I'm not sure that there's, you know, been so much, uh, research or steps done in terms of the, uh, the disparity study because we've been focused in on making sure that we have the policy squared away, that we've connected with the folks that we need to connect with and continue to do so in order to make sure that we're building, um, our policy in the way that's most advantageous for the community and for the district.
Okay, so then I withdraw my question, Dr. Carlin, and, you know, when you, when you know that that's coming up, just update the board, please. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Javonelli and then Mrs. Fisher.
Um, yes, I just have a couple of questions. One of them, um, is like, how many other districts has, um, this policy, this Small Business Policy? Like, is there any other districts in, do we know?
Um, I, I don't, I, I, we do know that Miami Dade has a policy. Uh, I'm not sure of other districts. Uh, Ms. Dupree Bruno may have some indication of that, but.
I don't know specifically about how many other districts. I can certainly look into that and provide that to the board, but I would agree with, um, Dr. Desmore that Miami Dade has that policy. And the only other thing I wanted to add, if I may, Dr. Desmore, is what, specifically so the board can refresh its recollection as to what is the disparity study? So first of all, you got to review all of the relevant laws, policies and all of those things, um, determine the geographic and the product market area, um, the utilization analysis, the availability analysis, the disparity calculation, private sector analysis, anecdotal data collection and community engagement, and then finally you get the report. And, um, the other thing I wanted to, um, advise the board in terms of that timeline, the first thing you have to do is collect the data. And that could take.
Right.
An enormous amount of time to collect the data.
Right.
And, um, based on what I'm reviewing here, I think it was suggested that it could take three to five years.
I thought it was five years to.
To collect the data. Then after that, you do the evaluation of the data, which can take another year to two years. And then from there, you go ahead and you get the actual study done. So this is a very long-term process and I think that's why there was such a, um, small step, small step, small step to accomplish this goal. Because the reason that you have to be very, very careful is when the, if for some reason we are sued because of our policy, you have to be very careful because the court's looking at this as strict scrutiny, which is a very high standard to meet. So we have to make sure that we have our ducks in a row and there is a legal standard in order to have these types of policies. And that's why you want to do a very good disparity study.
Okay, um, Ms. Javonelli, did you finish?
No. Uh, so, and then one of the other recommendations when you were talking about forums and stuff is, is I, maybe after the policy is approved, if that's where we go with this, but, um, it may be the Horizon Council and getting their buy-in. I think that they would be a, a really, uh, good group to kind of, we want our local, we want local businesses, right? So that's, I was just thinking about that. And then, uh, how does, how would this small, and, and you're going to have to help me, uh, Ms. Malley, regarding a discussion today, um, with Construction Advisory, the RFQ, how would this small business vendors be, like, would that be something helpful in that, when, in their discussions that they were talking about? Um, today, the RFQ process and what was changing, would that, a small business, would that help that, help them or you're?
Sure, if I could jump to, um, a slide on that, let's see. I think I'll just talk about it instead of jumping to the slide.
Okay.
So one of the visions that we have with the Small Business Enterprise Program would be by June of 2022, to be able to establish types of contracts by which we think there are enough small businesses in the community that we could do, and I'll use a federal term in quotes, a set aside. So we would pick those types of trades that we have small businesses in the community. We would release bids that would be, um, you could apply to perform those contracts only if you were a small business. So there. So therefore, only small businesses would be allowed to compete and win an award. So that's something we can't do today. And what we're excited to be able to establish is specific types of business, of contract work that we could go out and set aside for small business.
Great, thank you. Like painters and stuff like that, you're talking about trades like that, right?
Correct.
A little bit small, not big corporate. You know, with a lot of employees and stuff. So, all right, thank you, I love it.
Hey, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. So can you tell me to what extent you've communicated with the Southwest Florida Enterprise Center or our local chambers? Because they may have a lot of that information available.
So I will share with you that when we were at the advisory committees, they had recommended a couple, the chambers and a couple of other entities. So I think that what's really important is getting the policy adopted so that really, then we have to operationally engage in how do we do it? How do we make it happen? So the policy needs to be in place so that then we can pursue. And we have generated a lot of ideas. We've received feedback from Finance Advisory, Construction Advisory, and EDAC. And so we've captured that data and we're ready to roll once we get the policy rolling, once we get our team formed, so that we can take those ideas and put them in action.
Okay, thank you. And what would that look like?
What that would look like would be, first, the district team would come up with recommendations for a committee. And then these, and the board, if you adopt the policy, you would, I anticipate, I'm not, I would imagine that what the board does currently is each board member appoints one or more members to a committee. And then those committees would look at how the district is recommending we roll out the program, such as what trades we might want to look at. Importantly, how do we define the term "small"? So I like to give this example because you say, what is a small business? Well, we may have some firms that generate maybe under a million dollars in revenue, and they might have 30 employees. We might have other firms that have 20 employees and generate five or 20 million dollars in revenue. So it might be that combination of number of employees plus revenue generated. Like our construction management firms, you know, they might be small in terms of personnel, but they're building our $50 million schools. So the revenue that they're generating, they wouldn't be a small business, right?
So then you'd be looking at not only the number of employees, but their, their annual...
Most importantly would be the revenue generated from, from the firm. I would anticipate, we haven't decided that, but that would be important, knowing that, what our line of business is.
Thank you.
Okay. Round one, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Petrika.
I don't know if it was brought up before, but three suggestions that I had were Future Makers for one, because that's what they are doing, is looking at where the jobs are and where, and they do a lot, a lot of data, you know, extraction at the collaboratory. So that would be a major group to speak to. Also Career Source with Peg Elmore. Those two groups are trying to find, you know, jobs for people so they would be very aware of the companies and the needs to hire and all of that. And John Talmadge, of course, with the county, has a lot of that data as well. So between those three, I'm sure you can get, and the reason I bring it up, you know, we talk about the cost and time of doing the disparity study. It may be something that Future Makers already has on their radar and has some potential dollars to help provide that service and may be something they already have. So why reinvent the wheel?
Okay. Tell me what you would like us to do to move this forward?
Certainly. We would be delighted if the board would entertain adopting the policy that's been presented as a draft. And that would require going through the, to pre-hearings and briefing it to the public and then adopting the policy. And that would allow us to proceed with establishing the program.
So like the policies we discussed earlier, this would be pre and we would move to a first reading. Am I correct?
The board is inclined to move forward without another pre-brief. You can give consensus to move it to the first reading.
Okay. So let's do that now. Let's do consensus on moving this policy to a first reading. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Can I say yes?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
I will go along with whatever.
Yes.
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 Okay, so you're going with the yes then, Ms. Morgan?
Yes, that's my...
Okay, thank you. So it's unanimous to move this from this pre, pre-reading to first reading?
Do that again.
What?
She didn't say.
And just to add one thing, the EDAC committee was very favorable to this.
Absolutely.
Very favorable to this when they heard it, so.
Yes.
Okay, so...
Very excited, thank you.
All right. Wow, all right. And we are going to have a hard stop at 5:00. We have plenty of time for our speakers. And just a reminder to the board, tonight's the first night. And how long has it been since we've had the kids come and perform? And so they'll be here, what, quarter till?
5:40, I thought she said.
Yeah, 5:45 or 5:40, was it? I don't remember. What was it?
5:45.
5:45, that's what I was thinking. So 5:00 is hard stop time. And Mr. Dupree Bruno, would you please read the rules for our public speaking?
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. If you completed a public comment card, please ensure that it is in the basket provided in the back. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. Speakers may not address board members by name and personal attacks against individual board members. The board, the superintendent, or district staff are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning and we ask that you govern yourself accordingly. Per Board Policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. You should address the board as a whole versus individual board members as they act as a collective board. Please state your name prior to making your comment. When you're ready, Madam Chair.
How many speakers?
We have four.
Okay, is there anybody else that did not sign a card that wishes to speak? Okay, if you go ahead and, I guess, somebody turns on the lights back there?
Will the following, will the following individuals please sign up? Robert Roper, Denise Nystrom, Tara Jenner, Christine Divageli. And Mr. Navarro.
Robert Roper, also known as Ward Cleaver. Are we losing our rights for free speech? I'm very concerned about proposed Board Policy 1.111. This seems like more than just another policy. It is much more. As a nation, we're conditioned to believe that the Constitution puts certain limitations on the citizens. But upon a closer examination, the document was actually created for the purpose of limiting government over the citizenry. Today, you're considering the adoption of Board Policy 1.111. Some of the policy has been in effect for a long time, some of it is new. The restriction of addressing the board as a whole and not use a person's name causes us to resort to using board members' initials or the district number they represent or rhymes with or sits next to. This restriction is unreasonable and serves no real purpose. This new policy even goes as far as to restrict hand gestures from the audience that would indicate if you agree or disagree with the speaker's comment. I've actually heard one of the board members, I can't say that person's name, in an action meeting, say that she appreciates these gestures as an indication of the support or the opposition to the speaker's comments. Here's my question. After the hand gestures are restricted, what if a person stands and turns around in a circle as a sign of support? What if we shake our heads in an exaggerated manner to express our approval or disapproval? How far are you willing to go? And how often are you willing to revise the policy to eliminate the many creative ways in which the audience may come up with? Are you going to limit our facial expressions? You may say this is ridiculous. We would never be that restrictive. Well, the restrictions that have been implemented just since I've been attending meetings are beyond what I could have imagined one year ago. The chilling and overpowering presence of law enforcement presence before, after, and during meetings, in addition to enhancing safety, also chills expression. Having to wait outside before board meetings begin. You're under a law enforcement watch tower, similar to a small control tower in an airport. You must wait outside the building, rain or shine, until 15 or 20 minutes before the meeting. Then you're led inside in groups of five, or you're searched with a metal detector in the presence of law enforcement. I attended one meeting recently where the number of law enforcement officers outnumbered the number of people attending the meeting. In October, I was required to cancel on outdoor peaceful assembly, a prayer meeting that had been approved months before in the parking lot. We were going to pray for the board. Yeah, I got so much more to say, I can't, sorry.
It comes as no surprise that this policy has been revised on the heels of the truth having come out about board members and malfeasance. We should call it "Censure the Public Policy." The truth got told, yes, because of the malfeasance on the part of several board members, which has broken this system. And if you're not part of the malfeasance, it's time that you take a strong stand against those who are. I'm not naming names, including the superintendent. If the superintendent needs to go to the governor and ask for immunity so that he's not considered insubordinate and be able to tell what's really going on in this district, please do so, it is long overdue. Not only should you not be revising this policy, you should be coming out in defense of our First Amendment rights, asking the FSBA to take a strong stand against the NSBA. Not one of us has threatened you or harassed you in any way. That's a false flag. Some of you are trying to keep the skeletons in the closets, buried. Consensus is a problem because you are using it inappropriately. A consensus should not be used on anything that is considered actionable. A consensus should be like, should we have birthday cake next week? Not, do we support Policy 1.111? The chair utilized as a tiebreaker is a problem. In Policy 1.111, Section 2A, what are you saying? That if the board is discussing something during a briefing meeting, that, and it's going to be brought up later during an action meeting, that we're not going to be allowed to speak to it? That limits our time during an action meeting. One minute is barely enough time to speak as it is. If there are under 30 people, why can't the time be prorated? Every part of a board meeting should be on YouTube so that our freedom of speech is not infringed upon. So therefore, you can't have it after an adjournment because maybe it's not going to be publicized then. I dispute and resent the comment that it is the public that is keeping you working longer. We get one hour, a total of one hour, that's it. We're not prolonging you at work, you're prolonging you at work. Hearing the public before, uh, let's see, where am I? Hearing the public before you discuss important matters provides you with the ability to understand the sentiments of the community. If you wait, you don't know our sentiments. We should not be able to, we should be able to acknowledge those board members that are meeting the needs of the community. Other districts, including Collier County, are allowed to clap. With regard to the Chair of EDAC, Dr. Blakely's statement, EDAC should get, and we the people want, a copy of the school board attorney's letter that was sent to the governor regarding the motion to investigate District 3 board member. We have a right to that document.
Ms. Nystrom?
Excuse me, I think you, I think you know after the letter that was sent to the...
Ms. Nystrom? It's not part of this, it's not on the... I know, but it's not part of this agenda.
It was part of what EDAC said. I'm addressing what EDAC said.
I understand.
Why, why am I put in this position? You do that to me a lot. Can you please give me another 25 seconds?
Could you put 25 seconds on there, please?
Is that where the interruption occurred, at 25?
I, I, I mean, I wouldn't, otherwise I'd be asking for a minute.
I just didn't look to see how many seconds.
No, no, I, I trust you, Mrs. Morgan.
All right, 25 seconds.
I trust you, thank you. I'm almost finished. I think you know that after the letter was sent to the Office of Civil Liberties, that we are not going to stop fighting until this district is 100% transparent.
Tara Jenner, regarding your half-cent sales tax, everybody in this room and everyone in the state of Florida needs to contact their state representatives and their senators and demand the money follows the students. That will solve the problem across the board. Case law talks about limited public forum and the right of the governing body to limit speech in certain ways. Even this pertains only to content-neutral time, place, and manner restrictions, such as limiting the subject matter on the agenda, limiting the time allowed each speaker, and preventing disruption at the meetings. We have a right to free speech, to peaceably assemble, and petition our government for a redress of grievances that shall not be infringed. Much of the existing and proposed policy undercuts each of those to some degree. Unless someone is intimate with the current Policy 1.11, it is time-consuming to discern which modifications, whether added or deleted, to those sections have been moved to Policy 1.111. Please denote those clearly in the next draft as well as any further changes. This might require three different colors and fonts. Please don't use red and green for those of us that are colorblind, that doesn't help. The current policy is already onerous enough and restrictive of our rights absent the added limitation. The board appears to also be de facto bound in the new policy by any consensus reached during the workshops when later brought to a vote. Consensus votes are already seen as soft votes that are designated and designed to circumvent public comment. This goes further and implicitly restricts the board members from modifying their position during formal vote. The only time currently allowed public comment. Allowing public comment when a consensus is called might solve some of these concerns. Signs and placards, unless they obstruct view or impede egress and ingress in compliance with fire safety guidelines, should be allowed. Pray tell, what's so disruptive about making hand gestures? By the way, this sign is yes in sign language. This sign means no in sign language. And just so that you know, we should even go a little bit further and allow what I would call the three-clap rule, which is regularly seen in public speech and debates, at the end of any speaker or a board member comment. That would not impede on the progress of the board. Who determines what's respectful and abusive? Point in order, what just happened to Ms. Nystrom. What's respectful? And what's arbitrary and capacious? Just about everything that happens in this room. We have a right to do more than complain, but to also request corrective action when we determine you're not adequately representing the interests of those of us that are putting you in the office that you're in. If you give us respect, we'll give you respect. And here's the thing that I want to say right now, more than anything else. These particular standards and approvals that you have, what are you doing? The board's decorum isn't addressed. And if you approve the changes, much like they are now, without proper feedback, you're doing nothing more than that.
Christine Divageli, you know, it's a shame that we have to resort to theatrics like that. You know, it's also a shame that I wasn't able to be here at the beginning of this meeting today. So I tried to watch on YouTube. And it was very, I found it very convenient that we went out of order in our, in item, under item A1. We went out of order in our committees and we had EDAC speak first. And just so happens, YouTube wasn't working. It was buffering for like, a lot of minutes. So many minutes that I missed the whole EDAC presentation. So many minutes that I missed the whole EDAC presentation. Coincidence, I guess. So, Item B1 and 2. Once again, the attorney is abusing her power by creating policy that infringes on my constitutionally protected rights, which include my right to freedom of speech and my right to be secure against unreasonable searches every time I walk through your doors. I brought a clear bag this time. I am wearing very tight pants. There is no need for me or my 16-year-old daughter to be wanded every time I walk in this building. Item C2, for those of you who said that you heard from people in Cape Coral, I'm a people in Cape Coral. I'm a parent in Cape Coral. And I fully support sharing the half-cent sales tax with our charter schools. And I believe that you've already all made up your minds about that, so the very least that you could do is to respect what that last gentleman said and look into that federal funding for the STEM grant that I'm certain the charter school system contacted our district about, and I'm certain they were ignored. I doubt that any of that was not factual. So then, where are we at? I would like to thank three of the board members up there for doing the right thing during the attorney's policy revisions. I appreciate that there were some of you fighting for people and for our freedoms of speech. Last thing I'm going to comment on is E1. I'm sorry, but that whole entire presentation was a waste of everyone's time. I mean, it looks pretty and it sounds real nice, but it's absolutely not the reality of this district. And I fear that unless your RFQ process is carried out ethically and without favoritism, you can do whatever you want with the small businesses in Lee County. None of it's going to matter. Thank you.
That's a pain. Can you help me, please? I've got bad shakes on me. I see you saved the best for last. Lou Navara, Cape Coral resident, 38-year retired teacher, Lee School District. I'm in favor of that sharing the half-cent sales tax. You have plenty of money, folks. Debbie Jordan gave me this, and you are not getting the half-cent. On the odd numbers, you're getting 7%. And Debbie helped me. She's the only one on that board to come out in the sunshine here. So you've got plenty of money to share, and I want to see it shared. I didn't like the tax, but I wanted it shared. Nowhere was it told to us by the blonde board member that we were consulted. Nobody consulted anybody, unless you're referring to the deceased mayor. He can't talk, though. He's gone. Outsource? You don't even want to outsource the subs, the bus drivers here. We did extensive work for you, and you ignored it, and we're going to tell the charter schools to outsource? Give me a break. Come on. So nobody's been ever, when I went to those meetings with Dr. Atkins and we were against this, no one ever said this tax was not going to be shared with the charter schools. It was save the half a cent for schools. You're wrong, and you better reconsider. Now, we know you got the revenue, okay? Let's establish a few other things. Duval County decided to give the district. I suggest you call Duval County with the honorable attorney. I'm going to call them again. I've got friends there and in Sarasota. They've given more money to the charter schools. I don't know why we cannot. Okay, let's see. You save money because they keep students out of the public schools, and they're nice kids. Let's see, yeah, I have the paperwork here, but I do want to say, I hope Talc didn't put you up to this. I was a 30-year member, and you meet with them once a month, in my opinion, out of the sunshine and from the list I read, you discriminate against one of our Afro-American board members. I don't like that. Now, we're talking transparency, the blonde lady up there. Let's do the right thing and tell the truth. Because the truth is, you have the extra up money. You just don't want to give it to us, probably because Talc told you so. And I don't care. I was a member. Don't meet out of the sunshine. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, and I believe that concludes the public comment. I just have a couple informational things to add for Ms. Divageli. If you look on Board Docs, you will find the reports that were given by the six advisories. Okay, so just click on the first quarterly reports, and you will see that the EDAC report is there. And as far as reversing the order, there was no nefarious reason for doing that, like, oh, let's get EDAC in, when we have no idea if YouTube is up-down or what the problem is. But hopefully, that helps anybody who missed any of those. And of course, you know, I don't know what it'll look like when it's played back, probably the same thing, and that's unfortunate. I do want to make sure that there's a clear understanding about the Policy 1.111 that we talked about this afternoon. I know the first speaker used the word adoption. We are far from adoption on that policy. As a matter of fact, we, the consensus was just to move the policy to first reading. And as was explained during our earlier part of the meeting, there is time for public comment on that reading, on the second reading, and then before we actually take the vote. So there's lots of opportunity at that point. Perhaps a couple of you missed the fact that at least two people expressed their support for the hand gestures, and there was something kind of funny there. No finger gestures, but hand gestures, okay. And there were some of us, like myself, that didn't say anything, but are in support. So to jump ahead and say, well, you've already made up your mind, or to hint, you didn't say that, but to hint that we've already made up our mind, there are two more readings plus the actual vote on that, and we focused, you know, we're going to be discussing that a whole lot more. And we also, if you were listening carefully, discussed the use of consensus. And we, as a board, understand that there are some issues with the way we use consensus, and our board attorney has been working with us on that. And I think that we will, any remaining issues on using the consensus hopefully will be, not hopefully, they will be dealt with when we do our reorganization discussions. Okay, so, we have one more thing, one more consensus, a directive. Remember, this is not a vote, it's a directive on the Cape Coral response presentation with what we're going to do with that. So I'm going to ask our attorney, so this is worded precisely, what is your recommended wording for the way for us to indicate thumbs up or thumbs down on this?
I think, Ms. Vaughn, that if the board just indicates, I would like to move forward and offer a portion of the sale tax, or no, I do not. And that's what we need so that we can draft the correspondence and then bring it to the board with your intention.
Okay, so this is what we are, I don't want to use the word vote. This is what we are giving an opinion, or giving our board feeling on, move forward, do not move forward on that. And we've already had discussion, and so let's move.
I do not want to move forward.
They have something to say, right?
Okay, I do not want to move forward.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
Ms. Jevonelli has a question, I think. My only concern is something was mentioned after the fact from them regarding the municipal, it being a municipal charter school, which is different from the other charter schools. I would like guidance on that.
So I'll have to draft a little bit of, I did draft a memo, and there really is not a difference. A charter school is a charter school. Now, there are some other legalities that I can bring to the board's attention, and you can review that at your leisure. So when we come back with whatever letter, I will provide that to you and update the previous memo that I sent you.
So, are we saying we're not ready to vote on that? Or not vote?
I don't think you will be-
Give a direction? I thought we had spent quite a bit of time on this already, discussing it, and basically the only difference is, and this was mentioned, that a municipal charter is not run by a corporation.
It's still a charter school, and so the-
It's still a charter school, still a public school.
Yeah, it's not going to change the direction that the board is going to go, but I will provide some explanation.
All right, as we're voting, if there's a problem, go ahead. What, we're just giving direction?
Okay, may I make a comment?
Absolutely, go ahead.
So, before we move forward finally, I would like to see, I brought up the legalities and all that. I would like to see all of that and the other information written in a document with all of the data, so that when we do say yes or no, we have everything in front of us.
All right, I'm going to back this up. I think that I have the jurisdiction to do this as the presiding chair at this meeting. We are having a hard stop because we have the children coming at quarter till 6:00, and I would like to see us have a big welcome for them. It appears, although, that I believed that we had discussed this earlier and put forward our opinions at that time, and that we had waited to hear the responses, I believe that we were ready to vote. I'm going to change this right now to see if we are ready to vote without further comment.
A prior, just for clarification-
Can we not do that?
Just for clarification, a prior legal memo was provided to the board with regards to this. So the question about the municipality is not really going to change in terms of the legal outcome. There's no definition in terms of municipal charter school. A charter school is a charter school. And if you share the tax, the sales tax revenue with a municipal charter school, you will still have to share it with the other charter schools. So that doesn't change either.
Okay, Mr. Preburne, let me clarify something here in Robert's rules in terms of, I know this is consensus, not a hard vote, but am I wrong in assuming that when we have a discussion and we have chances to ask questions, and we had a presentation, and that we had public comment on this, that when it is time to give our consensus or our vote, that we should be voting? Is, am I wrong with that?
Yeah.
Or am I being hard-headed, and, which may be, in saying we had our chance and now we need to move ahead?
So you should, at this point, it should be, even though we're not voting, at this point, you should be given the direction, the consensus, to either move forward or not move forward.
Okay, and then we're going to go, I just wanted to be sure?
Yeah.
And so, those of you who are going to be bent out of shape with me?
I will add this.
All right.
Whatever document is drafted will then come to the board in an action meeting, and then you will have another opportunity to have a discussion.
Yes, yes.
And in the meantime, I will provide an updated legal memo.
Madam Chair-
Okay, so we're moving ahead, Ms. Gittens.
I have a question before I vote. And my question is, the attorney is saying we're voting yes or no on moving forward. Is that moving forward, yes, or moving forward, no?
Moving forward is yes or no?
You're not understanding my question.
Ms. Vaughn, I do believe what the discussion was, was either to move forward with sharing the sales tax or not sharing the sales tax.
Right.
I believe that's what the question is.
Okay, so, moving forward, I'm going to restate it. Are you for moving forward and sharing the sales tax, Mrs. Morgan?
I am not in favor.
Okay, I am not in favor.
I need more information.
Well, you need to vote, please.
Well, until I receive more information, no.
Okay, Mrs. Jordan?
I apologize that I had to leave out of the room for a minute, but I did read everything, and from what I have read, I am not in favor at this time.
I am not in favor.
Okay, Ms. Jevonelli.
I'm in favor, thank you.
I have a comment before I say anything else. I am, based on the fact that we allowed public comment to gather more information from the public, from our partner elected officials and the superintendent of the charter school system, and based on the fact that they all mentioned that they did not receive a response for many months, and I am concerned about the whole thing. To me, it was, as the District One representative, it was very embarrassing. I understand that there are many reasons why we should not move forward and share, but I need more information, because you mentioned something about some other legalities.
So I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher, what is your vote?
I'm not voting until I have more information.
Well, I said that as well, so-
You know what?
But Ms. Vaughn, those will be-
We're calling for a vote, and I'm sorry that some of you are unhappy with me on this, but this is how I see a meeting to go. You have your time, you study it, and then you vote one way or another, actually, and you will have another chance.
Ms. Vaughn.
This is to pre-burnout.
So it's thumbs up, sideways, or down. So I'm hearing anyone who's abstaining or needs more information as a no, a thumbs down. And then the rest would be a thumbs up or a sideways. So we'll draft the correspondence, and we will bring it to the board with additional information, and then the board at that point can make its decision as to how it wants to move.
Madam Chair, that's reversing what she said. A no, she said no was no not to move forward, so-
Right, but at this point, the consensus is to draft the letter that declines, basically, is my understanding what the consensus is at this point. And then from there, if the board chooses not to adopt that letter, then that is up to the board. The board can make that decision.
May I clarify something, please?
Sure, why not, Ms. Jordan?
Just what Ms., based on what Ms. Fisher said, that when that letter, as soon as the letter came in, it went right to the attorney, and they had been going back and forth. So it was not that it had been ignored. The conversation was being had with our attorney and their attorneys. They were, conversation was being had with our attorney and their attorneys. I just want clarification on that.
I'll just clarify that. Since July, there has been conversation between the attorneys going back and forth, so...
So it was not ignored.
It was not ignored, and then there's been discussion with staff, multiple meetings with staff regarding this topic as well.
Did you need another vote doing a thumbs up, sideways, or down?
No, I think I, I've got the consensus to draft the letter, and it will come back to the Board, and the Board can chop it up, reverse it, what have you, because you have not taken a formal action vote. So at that point, you'll have additional information, and you can decide which way you want to go.
Okay, that takes us to Board Member Comments. We are well over our time, but I'm going to entertain short Board Member Comments, two minutes apiece. Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
Okay, Ms. Gittens, please.
Okay, I have, I'll just do this one. Superintendent, if you can please update us on the Talc and Spout negotiations. I understand, and I saw it on the calendar, that we do have an executive session, but I would like to know in public, I, I was told by Talc and Spout in a meeting that the holdup was us, that we didn't have an executive session, and that's what they informed me and they said in the public. So I would like to know, were we the holdup as far as not scheduling an executive session, as far as, you know, moving forward? Because they did tell me in a meeting, they wanted to move forward, but we wouldn't have an executive session. So I would like you to clarify that, please.
So Superintendent, the only thing I would say is not to discuss, obviously, terms and those things that are confidential information in terms of the bargaining.
No, I'm just talking about the meeting.
Yeah, I would need to have members of the bargain team just, or like, for instance, Mr. Dodig, just to give a fair characterization that's in bounds of what can be stated.
To begin, to begin with, the kind of question is to blame somebody. There's no blame. They have canceled the session with us. We had plenty to bargain about. They chose to not move forward if we hadn't had an executive session yet. So that was correct. Talc's last meeting was postponed because we didn't have a room, because there was textbook adoption, and we're meeting with them on Monday. So that, that's where we're at.
And it was not to provide blame, it was to clarify for those people that are wondering what happened. So that was why I asked the question, and we do have it on, on the calendar, I believe, for next week.
Correct.
And then time-wise, how does that bear out? And the last thing is, I was, there was an email about whether Ms. Michael's departure has anything, or this negotiation has anything to do with the $1,000 in December.
The answer to that is no, and that employee has been responded to.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mrs. Jordan?
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Divagilli?
Well, Ms. Gittens had asked one of mine, but I just, I'll save most of this for this evening, but I, I don't have much. But I, one question I do want to, is regarding the grant that was mentioned by the Oasis Charter School reaching out to Dr. Spiro, and they said they hadn't, if you could update us on that grant, would be great, that they were talking about that money for them, that I don't know what happened. So I would like to know that. And I'll let the rest go for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, is that an answer that can be given? Oh, she's not here, right?
Yeah.
It can be given in the weekly update. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, and I think, Dr. Savage, do you have the answer?
I had inquired with director with Dr. Spiro, and he'd mentioned he's checking into it with Ms. Kennedy. Obviously, these, these things may not come to him directly. They may be routed to that piece, so we'll have some more thorough information about the specific nature of the grant, any communication that was received in the weekly Board Update, if that works for the Board.
Mrs. Patrika?
No, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fisher?
No, thank you.
Okay, Attorney DePree Bruno?
Just really quick, I just want the members of the public to know that the purpose of the policy is not to restrict the speech, is to find a way where we can find that sweet spot where your voices have been heard, and we're trying to resolve some of the concerns that have been raised, as well as allow the Board to conduct its business. So it's a work in progress. Rules don't happen like that. There is a process for rules, so we will continue to work on that. And then the other thing I would mention, things, decisions have to made, be made in a very split second sometimes. So Ms. Nyström, I apologize if I cut you off when you were talking about something that was on the agenda. Sometimes decisions are made, and I may not always call it right, but I do try my best to do that, okay? Thank you.
That's why I said last three times, and each time I was not doing anything inappropriate. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. DePree Bruno, did you have something else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Dr. Savage?
I have no comments.
Okay, we are at the end of this meeting. A reminder, the kids are coming tonight, so let's welcome them. We are adjourned.